Thank you, Laura. Welcome and good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending in person and online. This is the regular meeting of council for the Township of Tiny for Tuesday, February 4th, a rescheduled meeting from last week. So apologize for this no delay, but it's the joy of living in Tiny. And it actually is a good winter so far. So kick it off. I'll call the meeting to order at 5:30. If you could, put your electronic devices on airplane mode, if you could, just to keep quiet. And as usual, I just want to notify that the meeting is being recorded, audio and visual for record-keeping purposes. So thank you very much. Kicking it off for the regular meeting. Counselor, anybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Any changes or updates at this time?
This one.
Okay. Oh, I should make a note. Counselor Wamal, you're going to be leaving at some one portion of the meeting tonight.
Your worship, if I unfortunately have a personal thing I have to deal with at approximately 6:30, 6:40, but I will be virtual and I will be rejoining in person in about an hour.
Okay, thank you. Don't usually have those, but I think the rest of us are good for the evening, as long as it takes. So that's great. Okay, so the motion is the agenda for the regular meeting of council. Be accepted as distributed, moved by Counselor Locas, seconded by Deputy Mayor Miskinman. So those in favor? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, counsel, any potential instances of pecuniary interest that we should be aware of? Not seeing any. If these do come up, please make a comment and we can deal with it at that time. I will make one update to the agenda. There was one item that has been pulled from the committee of the whole meeting, and that is item C1, reports of consultants with regards to item C1, Matthew Hodgson from Barristan Law. So that item has been pulled for some updates and could potentially come up again another meeting in the future. So other than that, moving into a moment of silent reflection, if you're able to join me, please stand as we take a brief moment to private thoughts. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to move into our land acknowledgement statement, counsel. Anybody offer the French or English version? Counselor Bernal, please. Feel free to do both if you like, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The Township of Tiny acknowledges that we are situated on what was once the traditional land of the Huanwondat Nation and the Anishinaabe people. The Township of Tiny has been and will continue to be an important homeland and gathering place for indigenous peoples and Métis citizens. Altogether, we are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters, and we are to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Le canton de Tiny reconnaît que nous sommes situés sur ce qui était jadis le territoire traditionnel de la nation uranwondat et le peuple Anishinaabe. Le canton de Tiny a été et continuait d'être une patrie et lieu de ressemblement important pour les peuples octoptones et les Métis, les citoyens Métis. Ensemble, nous sommes les intendants et gardiens de ces terres et des eaux, et nous devons maintenir cette responsabilité afin de garantir la santé et l'intégrité pour les générations à venir.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bernal. Thank you. Moving on to announcements and for the evening, we'll kick it off. Item H1, the new administrative center update from Director Leach, along with an update on our septage. And Director Leach, if you could, please.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. Yeah, just a very brief update on the administrative center. Just for everybody's reference, the one of the main items we have going on right now is the construction manager at risk. The tender did close, sorry, the proposals did close out in early December. We had 15 companies provide proposals for us. Those were evaluated by four individuals, and from that list, we went down to four companies. And based on our evaluation criteria, we did an interview last Thursday, January 30th, with the four proponents, and they all presented their case, considered, provided a lot more detail, and enabled the committee to really ask a lot of questions and make sure of the accuracy of everything that was provided. We were very satisfied with the four results, so now we're just going through the assessment of all those. And the target is on February 19th council meeting, we'll be putting forth a proposal for a recommendation on which construction manager to proceed with. On the site itself, the sign is up where the, where the site is very close to where the entrance is. Just for the public's notice, that sign was confirmed by EIS as being appropriate, sorry, ASMA through the EIS as being appropriate place to install the sign. We did have that audited first to make sure. Another update for some recent activity we have going on is the tree removal tender. It closes on February the 6th, and the goal there is to have the trees removed by, for the site only by April 1st. The site will be surveyed and stakes applied per the EIS report that shows where we will be locating the site and make sure that there's no impact on the, based on the EIS report. And we're working on internally some design details for the actual site and the building itself. So we're moving forward, and you'll have more updates on February 19th when we have the construction manager at risk proposal to council.
Thank you, Director Leach. And I wonder if you could give us an update on the, our septage application with the Ministry of Infrastructure.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mayor Evans. That's another great news story. We joined with the Town of Midland, and on November the 1st, we submitted an updated application for stage two of the, phase two of the Housing Enabling Water System Fund. The Ministry of Infrastructure came back to us, and what they decided to do instead of a separate application is they joined us up with the current Midland application, which Midland did receive some funding for upgrading of their wastewater treatment facility. So they updated the project for the funding for about $3.6 million. And on top of that, the tiny portion will be $1.3 million. And what that does, that will update the new, the wastewater facility in Midland to accept all of Tiny's septage. This will be all the septic tanks that we do have and holding tanks, and this will be volumes that will be projected out for the next 30 years, which is the approximate life of the capital. So what the township of Tiny is buying here is the capacity, so we will have that capacity in that facility to be able to accept all of our septage. So we're very excited to get this grant. We'll be working on this over the next three years. The target completion date is 2027 to have the plant upgrades done. Again, we're very excited to move forward with this and looking for alternatives to field applications and making sure that our residents have close areas that septage can be managed. So we'll keep everybody updated. We're going through designs. We'll probably see physical work starting sometime in August of next year, or sorry, of this year, 2025. And I'll be working closely with the Town of Midland to make sure we have the proper agreements in place, and obviously the designs will move forward, and it's very exciting times for the Township of Tiny and how we're going to manage, go forward managing our septage. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Director Leach. And a couple of thank yous I want to extend as well. First of all, to you and your team. I know you've been working on this intimately, the team that you've been working with in the Town of Midland as well. You've been working very well together for a common goal. This is, this grant application and the subsequent reward, our award of it is unique in its structure, being partnered between two neighboring municipalities. And I believe that was one of the reasons that was critical in our success of getting this grant was it was well received by the ministry and the minister in particular, who was quite surprised that we were doing that when we started this back in, where, August? August, we started in Ottawa on this. So your efforts of your team and the team in Town of Midland, and frankly, we have to thank the province as well, County Simcoe, and in particular, this area as well. Population is growing north of 10% in the demands. Midland did get $30 million approximately to expand their water systems and their sewage systems for development along the Highway 12 corridor, if you want to call it that. So it's a substantial financial investment, but also an investment in our community and as we grow and move forward. So I'm very happy and I think this is, and it is, the largest capital investment this township has ever received, ever. So sign of things to come as we need, and it's good to know that we have, we have friends, not just neighbors, but also in Queens Park. So thank you for that, and I appreciate that very much.
Your worship, I just want to go one further and say a big thank you to yourself and Director LeBlanc, who took the lead on that delegation, Minister Sirma. Those kind of relationships are very important and obviously yielded a win for Tiny. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Director Leach, I think we're good there. I will now turn it over to our Director of Recreation and Special Events, Director Palace, who has a number of announcements for us today.
Excellent. So we did. Yes, we did receive a funding announcement from the County of Simcoe today that we've received an additional $10,000 to put towards updating or reworking our aging in place or our age-friendly plan for the township. So we have a cumulative total of $20,000 to hire consultants and provide us with some strategic direction in recreation programming for seniors moving into the future, so that's a very exciting one. We also have our winter carnival coming up on Saturday, February 8th. So there is a full roster of activities that day. We've got a Birds of Prey show coming in. The Elmvale Skating Club is going to be doing a figure skating competition. We also have our free pancakes for the public, taffy and smores. So there's lots of good things for families to do up at Perkins Field from 11 till 1:00 PM on Saturday, February 8th. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Palace. Appreciate it. Yeah, it's going to be very exciting. I'm looking forward to the Birds of Prey, and certainly is nice to have ice. You know, it's, thank you, Mother Nature, for allowing us to do that, and we're going to have a good time on Saturday, and if you can't make it, there's still two other rinks that are also operating where you can go out and skate at as well. So should be a good weekend, and I think the weather's going to cooperate too. So, great. Okay, counsel, anybody starting, Counselor Loca, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have two announcements. The first one is the seniors' club here on Bond Beach Road has changed their open house to the day after the election, so it'll now be Friday, February 28th, from 1 to 3 PM. And it's a recruitment drive, and they're hoping that they can get a lot more members and a lot more volunteers for various things within the Township of Tiny. And my second announcement is that this morning, at our seniors advisory committee meeting, we had a presentation from Heather Stone, who's the manager for the Red Cross, and she runs a program called the Canadian Red Cross Friendly Calls Program. And what this program does is it matches people, not just seniors, but people over the age of 18, just to make sure that people that are isolated or are not computer-friendly, that somebody touches base with them at least once a week. And there's probably 8,000 volunteer hours that go into this program, and I have a toll-free number that I'd like to share with everybody. It'll be up on Tiny Connect and in the future, but it's 1-833-979-9779, and that number is available 9 to 5, Monday to Friday. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Loca and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through your worship. Just want to notify the public and give them an update. On January 19th, members of council were able to attend the Roma Conference in Toronto, where we had a delegation again with the Minister of Infrastructure, the Honorable Kinga Sirma, to talk about internet service in rural areas. As you know, there was a SWIFT program, the, I can't remember, Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology, I think is what I was referencing, and they were responsible, that project, for bringing internet service along most of our shoreline here in Tiny. But unfortunately, that service doesn't go up the concessions. So we were advocating and provided Minister Sirma with a map showing and detailing where all of our internet providers were and our lines were. So we had a fruitful conversation with her. I think she's very interested in continuing that work on and hopefully investing, and I know she, she is arranging a meeting with our CAO, Mr. Lamb, to talk with some of the ISPs, the internet service providers, so hopefully we can get some more traction on that and bring high-speed internet to all of our community in Tiny. And I would like to thank the mayor for leading on that delegation to leverage that relationship that we've got with the minister. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Wamal, Counselor Bernal.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I guess on a sadder note, and I was remiss, I should have mentioned it during our moment of silence, but a very valued community member in Wyeville recently passed away, Nancy Morrow. She's been very engaged in volunteerism in many of our Tiny Committee's events in the past. She managed the Wyeville United Church Cemetery and a lot of their programming there. My condolences, thoughts and love are with their family.
Thank you, Counselor Wamal. Appreciate that. Counselor Bernal?
Yes, great, thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking on what Deputy Mayor Miskinman was saying, I attended the recent Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference held in Toronto on January 19th to 21st. More than 1,600 participants from as many as 300 municipalities, as well as organizations across Ontario participated. Roma takes pride in promoting, supporting, and enhancing strong and effective rural governments. About 270 of the Ontario's 444 municipalities have populations of less than 10,000, while scores more are rural in character. The ruler arm of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Roma advocates for policies and programs that will help build thriving rural Ontario communities. I was participating in several concurrent sessions, but the one I wanted to point out that I was very, very encouraged about this initiative was called the Healthy Democracy Project. And just read off the, from their document here. Join us to explore AMO's Healthy Democracy Project, addressing declining political engagement in Ontario's rural municipalities. Our initiative is designed to tackle the growing challenges facing local democracies, including reduced voter participation and fewer candidates running for municipal office. Learn how we're working to diversify candidate pools, foster respect in democratic processes, boost voter turnout, and increase awareness of local government's critical role. So I was very, very encouraged about this, and I will participate in this project. I believe the first open meeting will be in April, so I'm going to be engaged in this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Bernal. Appreciate that. I have one notice I just want to pass along. I was able to represent the township at our age-friendly, County of Simcoe Age Second Annual Age Friendly Recognition Awards. And it's a great opportunity. Honors are chosen by a selection committee in two categories. One is business and one is individuals. Businesses are acknowledged for their efforts in enhancing services and accessibility, while individuals are celebrated for their dedication to fostering age-friendly communities and improving the quality of life for older adults across the region. So great, great night. I had a little reception. It was a terrible snow night, but everybody was there, and we had a great evening. Great to see some amazing stories that go on throughout the County of Simcoe, and in this case geared towards age-friendly champions. And I was also able to attend and see, we had some people, Windley Farms, Maple Syrup from Tiny Township was recognized for their efforts. So Ann and Peter were there and I was able to share their excitement. They got a very nice plaque and very, very excited that they were recognized for their efforts to make their business interactive for age and senior populations. So great event. It is, as I mentioned, the second annual. There will be a third, so I encourage everybody, there's an open nomination process probably in about six to eight months from now, but please, if you have anybody in the community that I think is worthy of recognition for this type of opportunity, I think it's something that, and certainly in Tiny, we have a large proportion of our population is older, and we should do all we can to enhance their quality of life, and this is a great opportunity to do that. So, perfect. Counselor Wamal, please.
Just to tag on to that, your worship, I wanted to share, we obviously shared this when we had the designation, but the local aging plan, Tiny was the second Ontario and the first in the County of Simcoe to be recognized under the World Health Organization Global Network for Age-Friendly Communities. So the criteria for being such is listed on our website, and super proud of that accomplishment. So thank you.
Great, thanks for bringing that up. That was awesome. I'll just give a brief update on tinyconnect.ca. I know I tell you every three weeks to make sure you're on as a source of up-to-date knowledge. You may see a name change. We went to a new provider. It's called Voyant, or Voyant en français. V-O-Y-E-N-T. There's nothing needed other than just to accept the new provider, so it's not like you have to go in and re-register. So if you're already on tinyconnect.ca, it'll just switch over. It gives us a lot of enhanced capabilities for advertising, or advertising also, and just passing multiple types of messages across. So there's a lot of different things we can do with it. So we're excited about that as well. So something that's been driven by Deputy CAO LeBlanc's team and Jaclyn Brown in particular. So great to see that. Staff, any, counsel, any more further announcements? I think we're all, just like to pass one along. We had two PIC sessions yesterday and today with regards to the getting input from the public with regards to the Dynamic Beach Bylaw and its formulation, and just like to pass along to Director Leach, Director Hunt, Jamie Robinson from MHPC. Great job. Really well done. I think it was very informative. I learned a lot. I think it's going to be, like all these things, when we're putting in, we want to make sure we capture everything, a lot of really good information. So I really appreciate that. Sorry, I remiss, JF Robitaille as well was here, and I thank you for all your efforts. It was really well done. Thank you. So we'll have, you'll be speaking to the public meeting in the future, but we'll continue with the process and include the information that we've gotten, not just today, but also the, people can send in information as well, email or give us a call too. So thank you very much. That was good. Okay, I think we're announced out. We're good? Okay, we'll move on. Can't think of any others. Okay, good. We're moving into, oh, deputations to council, open deputations. So if there's anybody like to come and speak, just, I know there's people signed up already. Deputations are, in this portion are five minutes in length and have to refer to something that's on the current agenda. So if anybody would like to come forward, please do. Good evening.
Good evening, your worship.
Good evening, counsel and senior staff.
I've read with interest your CR 00225, Proposed Citizen Code of Conduct, approved by Mr. Lamb.
Excuse me, Dr. Bell, it's not on the agenda tonight. That's the item that was pulled.
Oh.
So we can't, sorry.
Sure.
Sorry about that, but yeah, it was just a last-minute pull.
I can understand why.
Well, we want to make sure we have it all perfect before, as much as we can, so it'll be included in a future meeting. Come on up. Want to state your name and topic of your discussion tonight.
Hi, I'm Chris Carr, and I'm referring to item G11. Good evening, Mayor, councilors and members of the public. My name is Chris Carr, and I'm the Green Party of Ontario candidate for Simcoe North. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned the state of democracy in Tiny Township. Participatory democracy is one of the six core values of the Green Party, and in here in Tiny, it appears under threat. A troubling example of this is Counselor Halalka's recent dismissal of legitimacy of a petition that was presented in the Ontario Legislature by Green Party Leader Mike Schreiner. That petition was accepted by the clerk of the legislature and received a formal response from Minister Paul Calandra. This means it met all necessary parliamentary standards. To suggest otherwise on the basis of unverified concerns, some signatures maybe from outside the region undermines a fundamental democratic process. Every petition will inevitably have a handful of invalid signatures, but this does not negate hundreds of legitimate voices calling for action, the vast majority of which were addresses in Tiny. Petitions are a cornerstone of the Canadian democracy, and dismissing them so readily is part of a troubling pattern in Tiny. This council has systematically restricted public participation. Township council social media pages have disabled public commentary across platforms from Facebook to YouTube. The number of deputations and opportunities for residents to speak has been reduced. These actions erode public trust and deepen a division in our community. Further, Derek Howard's own reporting betrays bias when he claims that "stop the build" movement was once stopped again. What was stopped was the referendum the petition was asking for, and some of those petitioners, of course, are people who are in favor of the bill. Why this assumption that those who want the referendum oppose the bill? The reality is Mike Schreiner did not support the petition because he opposes building, the building project itself. He made that clear on CTV News. It was that he supported it because the people of Tiny deserve to have their voices heard. That is the core issue at hand, democracy, and not development. Additionally, the new code of conduct for Tiny Township introduces sweeping restrictions on freedom of expression, raising serious concerns about overreach.
Excuse me, Mr. Carr, we can't refer to that. It's not on the agenda.
Is it a different item? Council leadership is about listening. Leadership is about trust. If Counselor Halalka and others on this council truly believe in the so-called silent majority, then the solution is simple. Take the minister's advice and put the question to the people, hold a referendum, and let democracy work. I urge this council to change course before the frustration and division in this community deepens further. Open the doors to public engagement, restore democracy participation, and the voices of Tiny be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions, comments, notifications?
Worship to you.
Yes, Counselor Wamal.
Sorry, sir, with. Just to clarify, sir, you said that the minister advised us to have a referendum. I never saw that written anywhere. Could you please clarify?
Could you please clarify?
I believe encouraged to listen to the voices.
Continue dialogue, I think is what it says.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Sir, yes, councillor Brunel, please. Sorry, is there one more?
Thank you for your deputation. Was the item that you were referring to on the committee of the whole, was it C-1-1 or G-1-1? G?
G-1.
Okay, thank you. And what municipality do you reside?
In what, sorry?
What municipality do you reside in?
What, where?
Municipally do you reside in?
Municipality. So, I live in Pennington.
Pennington, okay.
But I work here in Tiny.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Laurie Drury. I reside in the geographical area known as LaFontaine in Tiny. I'm here tonight to address item G-1-2, Diane Leblovick's previous scheduled deputation. On January 9th, I sent an email to each man on Tiny Township Council regarding the treatment of Diane Leblovick and other concerns. Only councillor Brunel responded. Now, after reading item G-1-2, it is clear why other men remain silent. Mayor Dave Evans, Deputy Mayor Sean Misskimmens, councillor Stephen Walma, and councillor Kelly Haloka, you do not see yourselves as accountable to the men and women that you are supposed to serve. The treatment of Diane Leblovick is one of many examples. Mayor Dave Evans, you publicly rebuked Diane and singled her out for procedural technicalities, rules that had previously been enforced leniently, to your words. Yet, instead of being given the courtesy to correct minor omissions, she was humiliated. If Diane's deputation was truly non-compliant, why was it approved beforehand? The selective enforcement raises serious concern about fairness and whether certain topics are being silenced. This is not an isolated incident. Over and over, the men on this council disregard the voices of the men and women who reside in the geographical location known as Tiny Township. Even when experts among us bring forward well-researched concerns, you four men rely on expert reports when they support your plans, yet dismiss local professionals like entomologist Paul Bell, and their findings contradict your narrative. You dismissed a petition accepted by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, falsely claiming it was illegitimate. You ignored political science Boris Kowalski's expert interpretation of Minister Calandra's letter in favor of your own self-serving needs. And when Drew Ironstone, a professional with decades of experience, presented a thoughtful alternative proposal, it was rejected outright without serious consideration or dialogue, further proof that you were not interested in meaningful discussion, only in pushing your predetermined agenda. And when false and inflammatory claims appeared in the media accusing residents of ties to the alt-right, you remained silent while further contributing to public ridicule by calling us wackos. Excuse my voice. Councillor Kelly Haloka, you claim you support environmental stewardship while backing new municipal buildings that will destroy a thriving ecosystem, a building that taxpayers overwhelmingly opposed, a building that men on this council refuse to let us vote on through referendum. Instead, you insist that a silent majority supports you. If that's true, why not issue it to a vote through referendum? And now, with the treatment of Diane Leblovick as referenced in item G-1-2, the men of this council seek to further justify your disregard for men and women that you supposedly serve. I compel each of you to reflect. Are you truly acting with honor integrity? Is it not your responsibility as leaders to carry yourselves with grace and composure when faced with opposition or even disruption? I compel you to do so moving forward. That's all.
Great, thanks, Mrs Drury. Any other questions, councillor? Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, Ms Drury. At the beginning of your deputation, you referred to an email that you sent. Could you please provide me the date once again? I didn't quite capture the date.
January 9th.
January 9th, and, hey, thank you very much. There's nothing here. Sorry, just one more question, follow-up, if I may, your worship.
By all means.
Through you. Sorry, was this in reference to Ms Leblovick's deputation? This email?
And other, there were other
Okay, because I don't have anything from you on that, and I know you've missed my emails before, so I'm telling you, I'm looking at it right now, I don't have one regarding that. So if you wouldn't mind passing that along to me, that would be great, and maybe I can respond to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Any others, councillor? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming up. Any other deputations this time?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Evans, council and senior staff. My name is Karen Zalinek, and I'm a resident of Tiny. I'm going to talk on the, I got a quick, a couple of short statements on the regular meeting of council under matters of consideration. I was wondering if down the road, you know, I don't expect an answer right now, but I just hope that the public would be able to find out. For that TTAC ad hoc committee, I noticed in the agenda you're going to sign it, but there's no mention of the members that have been picked, and I was wondering if it's going to be made known to the public, who's going to be on that committee. And I noticed in the matters consideration, the borrowing for the construction financing. I understood from the 303-page report in April 3rd of last year, it was 26.3 million, but I noticed in this document today that you're going to be borrowing 28 million. So with interest charges, I just was hoping that through the TTAC minutes, the public can be aware of the exact amount we're borrowing and what those, why it's that amount.
Okay.
And I think that would be great. And also, in the minutes, you know, in the TTAC, it talks about the basement being eliminated. And it'd just be nice if the public knew, is that because of the water table, is that because it's costing too much money? Because you were selling this building, one of the issues was that we would have an emergency center for, if there was a storm, for people to gather, and you were going to use the fire hall. So I just hope that in the TTAC minutes, there'd be more information given to the public on those matters.
Okay, that's great. So I've got borrowing, um
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc, sorry, I've got borrowing, the members you want, and the basement.
Yeah, like just anything that you're changing major, because on that 303-page report, you know, it was pretty good, the public could see what was going on, but as things change, it's kind of in the dark, and we just don't know, like, you know, the cafe and who decides that, and is the public wanting that, and just like, how's that come about? If it could be explained a little more?
We had a meeting on Monday, and we'll have actually another meeting on next Monday.
Right.
So, and then these items, I won't speak to them now, because this is not the format, but we can provide update at the next meeting and make sure that the information is included.
Okay.
It's known, just so you know, like, I know what the answers are, but we don't do that here. But we can provide them, and I'll talk to director Leach and the rest of the committee.
Yeah, I think the finances is number one.
That's fine. Yeah, we can, we can address that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for finding the answer to be pretty straightforward. Great, thank you.
And I know it's not on the agenda, but I could email it to you, but I'd rather just give it to, pass it to the clerk. I found 27 violations, and when you're, because you're reviewing it, I just wanted to pass this along, and you guys could go through it.
Sorry, violations of what?
To help you, the bylaw that you pulled out of the agenda, I don't want to discuss it, but I just want to help you guys draft it. And I've got
Oh, oh, the Code of Conduct?
27 violations that I think you should review. And I think it would be helpful.
Well, you'll probably, you'll be here in the next, I'm not sure if it's going to be on the next meeting agenda, but
Well, I just would like to whoever's going, doing, working with a lawyer on that, here's some information. And it's, it's actually
I appreciate that, okay.
I worked with a person that works in this department for the government, and it's, was all volunteer time, and it's really good information.
That's fine, you can pass it, Madam Clerk can take it for you.
Because we don't want any lawsuits, okay?
Oh, that's fine.
So I'd like to pass that along.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Have a good night. Next? There we go. Good evening.
Good evening. Given that the Citizen Code of Conduct was cancelled by Halalka, sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
General. I don't have anything written, I just want to say a couple of things.
Sure.
I hear that we're going to start clearing trees, we're going to start, the dates are set, the CMAR is proceeding. I still haven't seen any kind of a final budget number for what this building's going to cost us. And before we go a long way, go any way down the road towards beginning, clearing the land for, and tweaking the, tweaking the plans, I can't imagine how we can possibly proceed without having some firm numbers as to knowing exactly what this thing is going to cost us. And that's going to come in through the CMAR, I'm sure. Quotations will go out over a period of time. I would hope that we're not going to spend a whole lot of money until we actually have a final estimated number, a real number, not an estimate from a consultant, real numbers based on RFQs and quotations from bidders, so we actually know what the final number is going to be that we have to borrow to pay for this thing. And so, I'm simply asking, is there a, is there a, is there a number that we can't go past? Do you people know? Is there a number we're not allowed to borrow beyond? Do you have a number in mind? Is there a budget for this thing? I can't imagine any community spending this amount of money, the largest expense we've ever had in this, in this township, without having an actual budgeted number in mind. We have no end number in mind, we're simply proceeding, and that's all we keep hearing. We're going ahead, we're doing it anyway, we're posing for pictures with big grins or laughing or something, I'm not sure what that picture was all about. We're going ahead with that even without knowing what this is going to cost, and I just find that appalling. The citizens and taxpayers of Tiny have a right to know what this thing is going to cost us.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr Wolf. I think it ties in with the previous deputation, and we'll include that for discussion at our meeting on Monday, and provide the documentation for you.
And so you expect that the TTAC committee will provide a final number of what this thing is going to cost us before we go out and spend a whole lot of money putting in foundations?
No, I'm not going to commit to the final, final number, because as you just mentioned, we're still in the process, but we can give you a pretty good estimate, and I think we already have so far through the process, and we'll refine it, and we'll put it into our meeting on Monday. But thank you.
The consultant that helped prepare that estimate, right in the estimate stated that, he said, even this is an estimate, we have no idea how much this is going to cost. And quite honestly, with the uncertainty now that we're facing with tariffs, if they come about, we have no idea how much this thing could end up costing us if, if some of the goods are coming in or coming from the United States. This is not the time to do this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Your worship, through you.
Sorry, you're done, Mr Wolf?
No, I'm waiting for questions.
Okay, no, that's fine. Councillor Womack, please.
Your worship, through you. High level, again, we go back to, we did have a Class D study which details the costing, so that Class D has a $25.3 million estimate attached to it. As far as borrowing capacity goes, that 25 million is approximately one-third of our borrowing capacity. The township could borrow up to 75 million. Obviously, that's not in the plans. But now, that's the information I have to share with you.
So, the Class D, the Class D estimate you referred to, I read in that, in that article that this is at best an estimate with no idea how much it could actually cost, and he even said that these numbers are not to be considered final. So the 25, that's now, the 25 which we will double with interest is going to go to 50, you're saying if we went to
So the original costing was not double with interest. If you were to look at the April 3rd report, it was $19.2 million in interest on the 25.6, which gave you those numbers of the 42.3 million.
Okay.
And that was based on the interest at that time. Interest rates have come down, we haven't done the calculations for that, so it is not double. And again, you're overinflating these numbers, and I think it's
No, that's, that's fair.
A tool that you're using to, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish.
I'm rounding. I'm just rounding, because that's what's going to end up happening here. So, if we go from 25 or 26 estimated to 35 or 36 million, and we have to borrow then another 30, 25, so let's say 26, whatever it's going to be, we, if the 75 million is the magic number, if we have to borrow 75, if we have to get a debeture for 75 million bucks, we can't, we can't actually proceed with this?
I think in this case, sir, this is all getting really hypothetical at this point. I'll take your question with regards to clarification, further clarification on the budget number, and I think some of the information will tie in with the previous deputant, and we'll, we'll provide that information for you.
I don't
I'm not going to sit here and hearsay and conjecture.
That's fair. I appreciate it.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else? There we go. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor. My name is Andrew Ironstone, Drew Ironstone. And today, tonight, I don't have anything prepared, but I do want to talk about the bylaw 25005, which authorizes council to borrow $28 million from the OLIC, otherwise known as Infrastructure Ontario, and also $8.5 million from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM. And that's, I guess, from the TTTA, some of the comments there as well, making those The previous gentleman spoke about the potential of cost overruns, and in particular with tariffs, and how that's going to affect the construction costs. Now, it's a great unknown right now, as you, as everyone in this room understands, the world is in a bit of a turmoil, and we all know who is causing that. However, the implications from, from this turmoil are going to be around for four years. So, what I think the prudent thing for council to consider doing is to hold off on any loan applications at this point. We don't know if 28 million dollars that's being borrowed is going to be satisfactory in covering the cost. As you know, every single penny from the principal to the interest is borne by people in this room and people that live in this community and who pay taxes here. Taxes have gone up 26% under, over the last three years, while you gentlemen are partially responsible for approving those budgets. The concern is, what about next year? How, if these construction costs spiral out of control, the only way, and council, in the agreement, it states that taxpayers will be on the hook for it. That's where the repayment of both principal and interest are coming from, and people in this room are who will be paying for that. So, I don't think it's prudent right now for you to proceed any further until we have a full review of the CMAR documents. Find out what each CMAR is proposing, and as Tim will understand, the CMAR, the formulation of their, their pricing and approach is very much different from one to another. And in trying to go through and make an analysis of those CMARS, you'll, you'll find something that feels comfortable, that feels right, and the sales pitch that these CMAR do are quite outstanding generally. They really do a good job. But it's after the award, so I'm, I don't think it's prudent for the CMAR contracts to be awarded. It needs to be delayed. Everything needs to be cautiously undertaken, because we're in a period of real uncertainty, and the taxpayers are going to be the ones that suffer. So, I'm So, I'm asking council to look at the comments and, and the emails that have been sent to you. I personally sent emails to this council and very seldom would I ever get a response. Mr. Mayor, you will acknowledge on occasion that I have sent an email, but none of you gentlemen on this council respond to me. Councilor Walma, I apologize, you did respond to me the other day, telling me to, giving me some instructions on how to properly do something. But next council meeting, I'm going to be doing a deputation on alternatives, alternatives, other opportunities, and you need to listen to other options before you proceed. I'm running out of time, I thank you for your patience. This is not going away, we're not going away. What, what worries me most, I guess, is the next council. Many of you gentlemen have already, either officially or unofficially said you're not running again. I know some of you may be, but I can guarantee if this goes ahead, not one of you gentlemen will be on that next council. And that may be by your choice, but it, it certainly will be the choice of the taxpayers. And you're gonna saddle the next coun, council with your decisions today and, and going forward, and it's just, it's, it's not responsible. I understand that you wanna have.
Mr. Ironstone?
Pardon me?
You wrap it up?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your, your.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions? Counselor Walma?
Your worship, I, I know that you know very well the difference between the municipal tax rate and the actual.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you?
I know that you know the difference between the municipal tax rate and the blended tax rate or the overall tax rate, just for clarity sakes, because a lot of people do not. While the municipal rate has increased 26%, in those same years, the overall has been under 15, about 14.93 or something to that effect. So, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, and, and thank you for doing that, that's a, but that's a blended rate, you can't hide behind a blended rate, it's what.
It's not hiding, it's just letting people know the actual impact to their property levy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Understood. Any other questions?
Your counsel? Okay, thank you, sir, have a good evening. Okay, so anybody else? Mr. Bell, try again? Okay, good.
Thank you again. This time I'd like to talk about the sign and the trees.
Sure.
I know through talking with the district manager of the Ministry of Environment and Conservation and Parks, Tiny is well within the authority of cutting down trees on their own property. They don't need permission, they don't have to do an environmental assessment. However, there is a good way and a bad way to cut trees. The sign was located, as you've mentioned, it's been in the newspaper, but right where the sign is, two very large white pine trees, over 100 years old each, were cut down. If the sign had have been three meters to the right or three meters to the left, those trees could have been saved. If you want an entranceway there, put a road on either side of those trees and save them. It's the environmentally responsible thing to do. The land where you're proposing to build this building isn't on ice age grass, although I have found small amounts of it where you're building, but it's pretty insignificant. There are other plants in there and other bird species, et cetera, that are on the endangered list, and I would hope that you proceed a little bit more carefully than you did with putting the sign up. I'd like to know whose idea was it. There's, there's a free person right here who would gladly volunteer their services for free to advise on what trees can be saved, what trees are diseased, what trees are hazardous. It's, it's what I do and what I'd love to do for free anytime you like, rather than just simply go in there with a chainsaw and cut two perfectly healthy trees. Please don't tell me that they were plantation trees, they were not. There are plantation trees further back in, scots pine, red pine, et cetera, but these two trees were not plantation trees and were very healthy and did not need to come down. I'd just like to know who authorized those trees to be cut down, even though you're allowed to, I'd like to know who did it.
Well, this, this is not a question period, so I'm not gonna answer that. But I will pass this along to the committee.
That's fine.
If you got it. We'll pass along to the committee and include it with the other items that we'll, we'll talk about on Monday and provide you the direction that we received on where and how many trees to cut down.
And please, take advantage of people who live here, who, I don't want the building, but I don't want unnecessary trees to be cut down, and I'm willing to help with that.
Appreciate the offer, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Includes the, sorry, includes our open deputations for this evening. Thank you very much for those of you who participated. Move on to our, sorry, wrong meeting here. Move on to our, our scheduled deputations, sorry. And we'll start with, with Ms. Diane Levlevec, who's gonna speak about senior staff compensation. So, Ms. Levlevec, if you can come forward. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Clerks' Department for ensuring that my documents were in order, prompt answers, responses, and of course, my correspondence is on the, the Committee of the Whole Agenda tonight at G.1.2. So, thank you very much for all your help. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilors. For your time to hear my deputation, I will be addressing misinformation regarding senior staff compensation. I have serious concerns about an email exchange between Karen Zulinek and Counselor Stefan Walma relating to CAO and directors' compensation for overtime, a copy of which is attached to my written presentation filed with the clerk. The first is an email from Ms. Zulinek dated October 30, 2024, which reads as follows: Dear Counselor Walma, Regarding changing the council committee times, you referred to not having to pay staff overtime. I was under the assumption that all administrative staff are on salary, so they're not getting overtime. Am I wrong? The second is the response by Counselor Walma dated November 4, 2024, and it's on an open website. There will be a fulsome discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting on the subject. Staff will be able to answer questions, concerns on both timing structures. In short, rate overtime, senior staff, and in brackets, CAO and directors, do not get overtime. Support staff, the deputy clerk, IT, and bylaw, they do accrue overtime at meetings after hours. Usually, we have three or four staff there for approximately four hours. I would note that Counselor Walma's email response was copied both to the mayor and Clerk Walton, so they would be fully familiar with this matter. On a careful reading of Counselor Walma's response to Ms. Zulinek, I note that he states that senior staff, CAO, and directors do not receive any overtime, leaving the clear impression that they receive no compensation for overtime work. This position is, I assume, intended to support his motion to hold council meetings during regular business hours. What is not addressed in Counselor Walma's response is that the CAO and the directors do receive additional compensation in the form of one additional week's pay per calendar quarter, payable, payable in each of March, June, September, and December. This is in total four weeks in a calendar year for overtime compensation while doing their jobs. Regular office hours are 9:00 to 4:30 PM. Some examples of receiving this overtime compensation are for attending to committee meetings and council meetings, and the committee meetings and other events like the tree lighting event ceremony and the community barbecue, and in each case thereafter regular office hours. What is especially troubling and disappointing is that Counselor Walma and council have led the taxpayers to believe this misinformation about the CAO and directors not getting overtime while doing their jobs. What happened to accountability and transparency? In my view, suppressing accountability and transparency by council and Counselor Walma is inappropriate and unacceptable. This is not in my presentation. I would suggest to each one of you, you should read the Municipal Act, Section 224. In addition, Counselor Walma has been on Tiny Township Council as deputy mayor for eight years and two years as a councillor, and I would think that he would have been involved in staff contracts over that period. One can only conclude that he was fully aware of this additional compensation. If he did not know, he should have known. What I seriously object to is Counselor Walma's carefully crafted response to Ms. Zulinek, which fails to disclose to Tiny Township residents this relevant and important information. I am asking that you consider correcting the public record on this matter. It is essential for there to be clear, transparent information provided by council members. Taxpayers have every right to full disclosure.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Levlevec, appreciate that. Comments? Counselor Walma?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I guess, quick comment was, yeah, fully aware of staff overtime. I have been involved in contracts in the past. Further to the, the compensation that they get in lieu of overtime, because they do not get overtime, they also can take it as two weeks vacation instead of getting the payouts, that's in the policy as well, it's a public document, anybody can read. The, if you were to look at the amount of overtime that staff do accrue, it is well beyond the four weeks of compensation that we give them. Some of them are up in 14 weeks of overtime that they are compensated for, for. My comments to Ms. Zulinek, and I wasn't aware that she was sharing it with the public at large, so I apologize if there was a miscommunication in that regard, this was an email to Ms. Zulinek, was that when we have our meetings after hours, staff are not costing us any more money. However, I guess, I can use the term our middle management or the, our staff, like our deputy clerk, our bylaw, those ones do accrue a cost and do have a cost to the public. The four weeks of payment in lieu is budgeted for. The time that we have our staff here is not a budget expense and is therefore comes out of whatever surplus we would have at the end of the year from staffing. So there's a, there's a dollar figure attached to those. No dollar figure attached to senior staff, dollar figure attached to other staff that attend meetings outside of business hours. So that's a miscommunication on my behalf and I apologize if there was a misinterpretation there. But I guess in a nutshell, yeah, staff don't technically cost money right now, it is outside our hours, and when we started this process this term, our meetings were at nine o'clock in the morning. So by moving them to the evening, we added additional workload to our senior staff without additional compensation, which is also not fair, and goes back to my comments and my arguments for efficiency, work-life balance, all of those things as far as moving the meeting times. So, I apologize if it was a miscommunication, it is now on the public record as to where I was coming from, and I, I am sorry for that, Diane.
I'd, I'd like to.
Ms. Walma?
Yes, I'd like to respond, though.
Please, yeah.
Thank you. So, in my research on this particular item, I asked exactly what you just said about in lieu, and my sources tell me there's no in lieu, it is compensation, not in lieu. So I went farther because I knew that I was gonna get that, and I am telling you now, my sources are reliable and there's no in lieu for your staff, according to my sources, and quite frankly, they're very good. So I would like to leave it there. Thank you for clearing up the miscommunication, if that's what, you know, you're saying, but I am telling you, I do a lot of research before I come forward. I would never have come forward to this unless I firmly believe that the information I have is exactly right on. So, thank you, and good evening.
Great, your worship. Follow-up?
Please.
Sure, Counselor Walma?
Through you to our CAO, just to clarify the policy piece, as far as the compensation goes, could you please explain it as far, is it overtime that staff receive? How is it defined?
Just, anyone?
I turned my mic on, should be okay. So, through you, Counselor Walma, or sorry, through you, Mr. Chair to Counselor Walma, yes, so senior staff are all, the, as the policy indicates, that's online and available for everyone to see, the senior management and CAO get one week in lieu of overtime every quarter, that is how the policy is worded, that is how it is taken. The staff also have the opportunity, if they wish, to take it as two weeks, up to two weeks worth of vacation time versus overtime. So it is in lieu of all the overtime nuts worked, and your senior management team works it.
Thank you, Cao Lynn. Counselor Walma? You're good? Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Levlevec, thanks for coming in. Mr. Levlevec, the next deputation is Mr. Nicholas Levlevec with regards to deputation process. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
It must be a relief that a few delegations and a moment to talk about the bill.
Just turn your mic on, sir, and then we're, we're ready to go. Floor's yours.
Not used to this. Anyway, I'm gonna speak on something which is not, again, related to the bill, relates to the changes to the open deputations which have been going on, I think, for the last year, which are puzzling to me and I don't quite understand it, and I think a lot of people in the public don't. Anyway, just to read it, on March 13, 2024, council passed a new procedural bylaw. Prior to that, both opened and scheduled deputations were made part of the official agenda, and accompanying notes became part of the permanent public record. A delegate doing an open deputation could provide notes and ask to be put on the agenda. An example of this was my wife's delegation on December 18, 2023, which is referred to in the minutes, in the formal minutes of the meeting as Diane Levlevec 2024 Budget Open Deputation Notes Received on Desk. With the new procedural bylaw, council materially changed the status of and the rules for open In my experience, open deputations are generally from residents and taxpayers of Tiny who wanna bring their serious concerns to the attention of council. You had a fulsome discussion of that tonight. Currently, open deputations are forwarded to council only for their information. Currently, open deputations are forwarded to council only for their information, and speaking notes or other materials are not attached to the agenda. To make matters worse, perhaps different tonight, council rarely ever asks questions on concerns and issues of the individuals presenting. The only public record of an open deputation is on Tiny's live streaming site. This has two major negatives. First, this site and its technology are not available to everyone and are not easy to follow, which obviously creates accessibility and inclusivity issues. Even worse, any record of the content of the deputation will totally disappear when the live streaming tapes are expunged at the end of the next calendar year. Any speakers for scheduled deputations, especially around budget time, are from corporate or other established entities asking for money or other financial support. Some of these are from individuals or corporations who are not even resident in Tiny Township. Scheduled deputations of ten minutes appear on the agenda for residents and taxpayers to read prior to the meeting, and these materials remain permanently on both on the public, on the written public record. What you have effectively done is to create two categories of deputations, each with a different status, level of importance, and relevance to this council, and by extension or implication to the Tiny community. The message appears to be clear that you do not value the input from a person making an open deputation as much as that from a person making a scheduled deputation. To resolve this, I'm asking council to consider amending the procedural bylaw relating to open deputations as follows. Open deputations should be considered as action items, not just for information. There's often important material and important considerations. They should at least be given the recognition of what the time and effort that people have put into it. Speaking notes or other written materials are at the option of the of the deputant to be made part of the regular agenda and the public record, so they're available for future for future reference. And council will have the courtesy of engaging and asking questions of and respond to persons making open deputations, similar to what they customarily do with scheduled deputations. If you decide not to adopt this suggestion, these suggestions, the clear message will be that the issues and concerns raised by Tiny residents in open deputations are less important to you than those raised in scheduled deputations. I would ask you to seriously consider these, because it doesn't take much cost, there's not much time involved, and I think it has some meaning to the people who are putting, taking the time and effort to make regular deputations. Thank you very much. I'll be pleased to address any questions or comments you may have.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Levlovic. Start off with Deputy Mayor Miss Kinsley.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Good evening, Mr. Levlovic.
Good evening.
Thanks for your deputation. I do have a question for you. So for open deputations where notes aren't provided, how would you suggest that we handle those? If your ask is to include them on the public record, are you suggesting that staff then go in after the fact and transcribe them, or?
If someone doesn't want to bring notes in, that's fine. Their option. But where the somebody takes the time to present, as my wife has done on regular regular occasions, provided notes and asked that they be put on the right agenda, I don't see how how difficult it's a it's a photocopying exercise and at that point in time, or so I don't think that's a big thing. No, I agree with you. If someone doesn't want to do it, that's fine.
Thank you.
Understand the implications.
That clarifies. I was just wasn't sure about when people get up, as we've seen tonight, that say, I have nothing prepared. Just just wanted clarification around your thing.
No, listen, that's fine. I have no problem with that. But I think that there is that there is a but it's also the downgrading of the the status of the deputation. It was previous to the change in twenty twenty-four, there was no rec that we give the there was no statement made that the 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 open deputations were only for information. They were given the same, at least apparent, status as a scheduled deputation in terms of how council would look considerate. Now, you have essentially categorized it as something subordinate, and I don't understand the reason for that. I mean, people who came here tonight are taxpayers, and I think they would deserve the recognition of having their words have the same meaning as the chairman of Georgian Bay Hospital who happens to come here on a on a scheduled deputation.
Okay. Next, Deputy Mayor, Councilor Walma?
Through you. Thank you very much for the deputation, and obviously, from a process standpoint, this one will be discussed at our next meeting of the whole for action if council desires to go that route. Were you aware that we can send, anybody can send an email into the clerk and or council and have it included in the agenda even without having done a deputation?
No, I'm not. I wasn't familiar. I'm really talking about the people who take the time to sit here and talk to you. That's the ones I'm that's where I think people take the time like the people have tonight to come in, and I think it's fair to say that it's it would be it would be appropriate for this council to consider them the same as Diane and I making a scheduled deputation.
I all my my only comment is is that I I'm hundred percent happy to open up more open deputation time. My only argument, I guess, is that Tiny Township, past councils, this council have gone above and beyond as far as deputations go. The city of Burlington, I know when I did the research, they don't have an open deputation process.
I would actually just step by, we just did a deputation in the city of Burlington, another matter.
But it was but it was scheduled, correct?
Listen, I I applaud the deputation time that's taken by this council. It's you it's almost unique as far as my experience. I think it's a wonderful thing, but this is a small matter. I don't think it involves a lot of staff time. I think it's a question of what's the message to the community when we say people talking are only for information? We don't we're not going to consider the importance of it in our further deliberations on this matter. They're just, I don't think this is a big gimme. I don't think it'll add to the budget at all, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Evans. I just wanted to mention, council may recall that they did pass a direction of staff to review the deputation process, so we can certainly take these thoughts into consideration.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll do that then. Councilor Bernal?
Thank you. Thank you for your deputation, Mr. Levlovic. Were you happy with the bylaw concerning this matter prior to this council? Was there was any issues at all?
I haven't followed all the transition by pointing back to these-
Sorry, Mr. Levlovic?
Right, sorry. I haven't followed all the transition and change. I know this has been under some deliberation, but I know I just saw the changes which are being proposed or have just been proposed in the last year, and I just wondered what was the reason for it. As I said, it seems to have been done with little or no public discussion. It was just a decision of administration or council to do them, and I understand that you don't have to put notes on for for an open deputation, but our our family, Diane and I, when we do it, we make sure there's notes because we want to have, we wanted to have it on the permanent record so people who looked at it later, I don't know why anybody would, but if they did, at least they would have had access to those documents.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Bernal. Any further comments? Great. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming in. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. You have a good evening.
Worship, I have to switch to virtual.
By all means.
I will be back shortly. Thank you.
Safe travels. Moving on to item K, reports of consultants or third parties. We don't have anything with regards to that this evening. Then moving on to item L, adopting and receiving minutes of previous meetings. We'll start with item L one, which is minutes of council advisory committees and other meetings as be adopted as distributed. So council, mover and a seconder for discussion? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Seconded by, thank you, sir, Councilor Holka. Any items for discussion, council? Councilor Bernal, please.
Yes, great, thank you. The December sixteenth, Tontia with Tiny Administrative Senator Committee meeting minutes.
For discussion?
Yes.
Counselor? Okay, great. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Good. Floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Concerning item six dot D, staff engagement update, there was staff engagements. It says that staff engagement sessions will be scheduled in January with the senior management team participating in the first phase of discussions. Subsequent reviews will be held with staff. Staff engagement sessions, how do they go? Like, actually, I want to know how they went.
Okay. Good question. I'll pass it along to Director Leach, please.
Through you, Mayor Evans. The staff engagement session did not occur in January. We've gone through at our last meeting, we had discussions about the schedule of senior management team and the staff reviews, and tentatively, those will be scheduled in the latter part of February.
Councilor Bernal?
Great, thank you. On the follow up, just want to know what what does it look like? What are things that are going to be dealt with in the staff engagement session?
Director Leach?
Yeah, through typical staff engagement sessions that of this nature, an overall view of the the design of what the facility looks like, very similar to what's already been provided. It'll be looking at the functionality of the work areas, things like desks and how they're how they're laid out, if there's any concerns that people see from a workflow standpoint. With any office, you want to make sure that the workflow objectives are met. So it'd be those types of activities and just where everything's located and and the convenience of it, and just make sure at a very high level that we haven't forgot anything at this point.
Yeah, and if I might just jump in there, it's actually kind of a neat process, Councilor Bernal, because apparently the building is being designed in three D. So this will be a process where the staff will actually get to see maybe not the exact location in the building, but the the format of of how the the areas are separated, designed. So even like down to wall height, things like that, that and then so this is really the first opportunity for our staff to and and their their input, obviously, is they're going to be sitting there every day, so we want to get and what we can do to make sure that their their workplace is is right. And then there's also some practical. I know there's a neighboring municipality that they didn't really, they made a couple of mistakes where they put washrooms right next to to kitchen areas and things like that, that ended up being a little bit awkward later on when the building was built and a little too late. So we want to make sure that we 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 vet every opportunity to make sure that it's set up in an efficient and future-ready position. So any further follow up on that, Councilor Bernal?
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to move on to item six dot E. Site report update, building design review. Unit Design Studio brought forth for the committee's review recommended changes in the project design. These proposed changes include design improvements to the council chambers and staffing areas to maximize efficiencies and eliminates the basement of the project. These revisions will assist with business flow, reduce the need for stairs and an elevator to help reduce overall costs. My question is, so how much of it will it, how much of this amendment to changes will reduce the overall cost? I'd like to know that question, that answer.
Yeah, good question. We're actually very excited about some of the changes that we've implemented, and Director Leach, you can you can provide more detail on that.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, through the different design reviews and and looking at it, when you have a very high-level initial design, which the architects have seen and the public has seen what the design looks like, once we start getting into a little bit more of the details of workflow, how the office staff will integrate with the public, how the public will integrate with staff and council, and you start looking at items like that, starting to understand what true space that we do require. Things like the basement, that was one thing that we looked at as being, A, something be able to reduce our costs. Whenever you don't have to dig a deep hole and and put basements in, that's fine, but with that, there is obviously things that we talked about, you know, like the E. O. C., the Emergency Operations Center, which was one thing that we targeted down there. So through some efficiency designs and and looking at how the workflow happens, we're able to eliminate that space and and not require that and compensate that in the upper floor so that we can have dedicated Emergency Operations Center, which also will double as training rooms. Also, it just won't be a room that sits vacant for the hope that an emergency or the in the case of an emergency happening, so it will have a dual-purpose room, but it'll also have the security that an E. O. C. requires. So this is just ongoing project management that we go through and looking at the design. They talked to some items in here about a backup for the fire hall. That was one thing that we talked about, very good idea. Also, within the minutes, looking at the design of the council chambers, is there ways that we can reduce the cost of that structure going from three different roof systems to two roof systems? All of that with the hope that and and the desire that we will be reducing cost of the overall project. Have we determined the exact dollar amount that this will reduce the construction cost? We have not. We just know through good sound engineering that this will reduce the costs. And this is something that that I've always done in all my projects, and and we always make sure that we provide the proper efficiencies, and if we don't need something, then we don't do it. Also, understanding what the true requirements are for the different office spaces has allowed us to make these different layout modifications, and in the end, we will see some some cost savings. And also from some structures as far as the solar panels now, you know, instead of having them on the ground and in the solar, or sorry, in the parking areas, we can have them on the roof, so we're utilizing that roof structure now for our solars, because this is going to be an all-electric building. There's no natural gas running to site. This will be one hundred percent electric building. So there's a variety of different design changes that we'll see throughout the the process. An earlier deputation talked about our construction manager on board. Once we have that individual on board, that's when we start really getting into the weeds of looking for ways we can save cost, how we can change designs, because right now it's just lines on paper, and this is the opportunity to make sure we take advantage of all those types of improvements.
Thank you, Director Leach. Appreciate that. Councilor Bernal?
Thank you. Follow up. So in your, what you just talked about there, is there a second floor to this building?
No, there is not. This is all on one 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 level.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought you said second floor. Okay. And when will the public be able to see these changes and an estimation of the reduction in overall cost?
Yeah, well, that's a two-stage question. First of, the first part of the question is, you'll see, once we have our next set of minutes coming in, and those minutes are ratified by council, the public's going to see some of these some of these changes in. We're just, that's the process we followed all along with with the minutes to our meetings. The second part of the cost, we'll see that cost reduction incentives when we get the construction manager on board. Right now, we're at a class D, and we'll be working from a class D to a class C to a class B estimate, and that'll be working directly with the, obviously, with the construction company and with the architects, and then the architects, all the vendors that we have lined up that are doing all the designs.
Great. Thanks, Director Leach.
Great, thank you. Yes, so I'd like to address new business seven, new business at a cafe boutique, Tiny Treasures, Mayor Evans brought forth for the committee's consideration of concept of a cafe boutique, which could be included in the T. T. A. C. project design. This concept creates a welcoming space for residents and formulates a community hub for residents, visitors, and staff. And to address a question to Mayor Evans, who brought this forth, is it going to be similar to the one at the M. C. C. in Midland, Midland Cultural Center? And is it going to be something similar to that cafe?
Well, this is personal. It's not other in terms of the the committee. We can, Director Leach can speak to that. Frankly, I didn't think of it in that size context. I my my vision and the initial design location that we put it in is significantly smaller than that facility itself. I didn't foresee a liquor license being involved like it is an M. C. C. This is a facility that we're going to have anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five people working in this facility, and it's an opportunity for for staff and to have an option for, you know, light food during the day, an opportunity for same food and beverage type idea for for people that are visiting, and we do have a location for people to sit at. But also, too, it's an opportunity to sell items that are uniquely Tiny branded, both in-house clothing that we sell upstairs right now. We have a couple of cabinets where we sell tukes and things like that, but also, I mentioned Winley maple syrup and garlic and and products that are unique to to Tiny to bring to highlight some of those ideas. So but I guess in in a size context, no, it wouldn't be the same like size as as- So, but I guess in a size context, no, it wouldn't be the same, like, size as, we just don't have the space to do it. And in terms of the, what I call it, the offering, that's going to be available will be somewhat different than that. Director Leach, is there anything you can, you want to add to behalf of the committee?
No, through the, through the mayor, yeah, this is, it's not, it's not like what Counsel Brunel described, but also, everything that we look at is multi-use space, and that's how we want to have this designed. This wouldn't be a dedicated area, it'd be an area that we can utilize for various different functions, because there is going to be a community room in there. So we wanted to make sure not only does it serve for the day purpose, the Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 4:30, but it also services for other rental arrangements and other types of events that we may want to host in that facility.
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks, Director Leach.
Thank you, just a follow-up.
Your worship? Sorry, Counsel Wama, would you like to add to?
Yes, please. Through you, to Counsel Brunel, you asked about the staff engagement sessions too, and I just wanted to point out for members of council that there will be breakout sessions for council. Obviously, we can't go in as three members, but we'll have additional breakout sessions where two councillors will be in the, those same engagement sessions to offer our thoughts on planning the council spaces, as that's our bailiwick. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Wama, appreciate it. Counsel Brunel, please.
We thank you. Prior to the meeting, I was reminded again about some of the people that attended my restaurant. I was in the restaurant business for seven years, so I'm familiar with the industry, but also the MCC café. Very, very difficult to run, you see many, many changes of hands of their operations, and I would highly discourage a café, this TTAC, especially out in the outskirts where it's going to be, if they can't make it downtown Midland, I don't think it's going to be able to be a viable entity in this TTAC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel Brunel. Anything further? Okay, seeing no further discussion on this item. Moved by councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Miskamins, seconded by councillor Holoka, that the items under section L1, minutes of council, advisory committees, and other meetings be adopted as distributed. All those in favor? Counsel Wama?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, carries unanimously, thank you very much. I have a request for a brief bio break. Moved by councillor Holoka, seconded by Deputy Mayor Miskamins. The meeting recesses at 7:01. We'll just take five minutes, it won't take very long. All those in favor? Thank you very much. We'll take a brief recess, we'll come back at 7:06. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to get started again. 7:07. If you could please be seated. I promise I wouldn't do that again. I know, he made me promise I wouldn't do it. Okay, please sit down. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, meeting reconvenes at 7:07 PM. Moved by Counsel Brunel, seconded by councillor Holoka. All those in favor? Thank you, motion is carried. Thank you very much for indulging this there. Moving on to item L2, minutes of closed session committee of the whole council meetings. Can mover and a seconder, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Seconded by councillor Holoka. Any discussion on this items, council? I don't think so. Motion is that the following minutes be adopted as distributed, January 8th, 2025, closed session, regular meeting of council, and January 8th, 2025, closed session, meeting of committee of the whole meeting. All those in favor? Thank you, motion is carried. Counsel Wama is unfortunately unavailable for 14 minutes. Pardon me?
Michael Clark, you're right.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to confirm, but the mayor did confirm all the rest.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. Moving on to committee of the whole reports. Pull this one up. Mover, please, for discussion. Thank you, Counsel Brunel. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Miskamins. Thank you. The motion is that the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report for January 8th, 2025, is voted upon, be formally approved or adopted, or formally approved and adopted with the exception of the following items. Any items we have mover and seconder for discussion on this one, council? We're all good. So we're going to, motion is that recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report for January 8th, 2025, is voted upon, be formally approved and adopted. All those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Carries. Okay, moving on to matters for consideration. Item M1 is appointments to township of Tiny Administrative Centre Ad-hoc Committee Resolution. Can mover and a seconder for discussion on this one? Counsel Holoka, thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Miskamins. Any discussion on this item, council? Counsel Brunel, please.
It seems that the motion is missing the names of the people, like I'd just like to know how we're dealing with this motion.
Okay, fair enough. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to explain?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mayor Evans. So the closed session committee of the whole report, in which this matter was discussed, I wanted to ensure that that was approved and not pulled in any way, shape, or form before the actual appointees were noted on the resolution, so that's why they did not show on the agenda, but they will be in the one that's being read currently.
Be happy to read the motion.
Yes, if you can read the motion at this time, thank you.
Certainly, okay. And the motion is, where does council consider the applicants for the township of Tiny Administrative Centre Ad-hoc Committee at the January 8th, 2025, closed session committee of the whole meeting? Now therefore, be it resolved that the following members be appointed. And they are Jackie Chavary, Janice Merton, Pamela Fulford, Tara Jaeger, Jason Garant, David Dodardo, and Jim Midaw. And further be it resolved that councillor Holoka and one council representative from the township of Tiny Administrative Centre Committee be appointed as council representatives with the staff resources to be Tim Leach, Director of Public Works, and Jean-Francois Robitaille, Engineering Manager, and that the committee administrative coordinator proceed with the scheduling, the required training for the appointed members and scheduling the first meeting. So now, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, great. All those in favor? Thank you, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Exciting to move that forward, that'd be great. Okay, moving into item M2, which is item bylaw 25-005, being a borrowing bylaw for construction financing, the new administrative centre. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Holoka. Any discussion on this item, council? Counsel Brunel?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to know how the figure of $28 million was established.
Answer some of the questions from our deputation. Deputy CIO, please.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Evans, to Counsel Brunel. Happy to answer that question. So the Class D estimate was the basis for the loan application, plus what's included in the, or sorry, what's not included in the Class D estimate is the professional fees, the UDS professional fees of 6.63%, as well as the HST expense. So that runs up to about 27 million and I think about 300,000, 300. So I rounded it up, because there are other costs that are also contained within the Class D estimate that are not finalized. That gives us the opportunity to not have to go back to Infrastructure Ontario should we need a little bit more funding for this construction loan. Doesn't mean that we're going to use it all. We have a Class B estimate that we're going to have to submit to Infrastructure Ontario, so they have that documentation. So this is kind of at this point, the max line of credit, so to say, that's what this is, essentially a line of credit, interest-only advance, so that we can continue construction without any delays and not have to come back to council. The one thing that we can do, considering that interest rates have been going down and they may continue to go down, is that you can actually debenture a portion of that project ahead of time, so, or a portion of that loan ahead of time. The other piece of information I think is key to know is that the FCM grant that we are applying for and the loan that comes along with that hasn't actually been applied for yet. So when and if we, when we do actually apply for it, I should say if, when we do apply for it and we get the funding, if we get the funding, that funding can then be used to pay down the line of credit, should the line of credit be at a higher amount at that point in time. So hopefully that answers that question.
Thank you, Deputy CIO. Counsel Brunel?
Yes, a follow-up. So I'm just like trying to get some clarity here. So there was an estimate of 25.7, now you're saying there's additional costs, and brings it up to $27 million. So the initial 25 million, was it just for the building? Does it include septic, the parking lot? Like, we, I think, I think we all need to know what's the final cost of the construction and of it including the design, what you just mentioned, the extra, like, it's a little frustrating to, when we're doing something of this scale, to have a moving target when it comes down to the end cost, the total, the end of the total cost, what is it going to be? Like, it just seems to be additional information that, well, if we know that information now, well, maybe we could have maybe not do this, because it's going to cost, it sounds like more than 25, it's going to be 27. Should we hope that things are going to not be so expensive, but usually in construction, they are usually more expensive than what was hoped for. And so it's just, it's just very concerning what's going on here. You also mentioned a Class B estimate. Is there a deadline to that Class B estimate?
Deputy CIO?
Yep, thank you. There's no deadline, but the loan will not be advanced until we do get the Class B estimate.
Okay.
Counsel? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is that bylaw 25-005 be enacted and passed this fourth day of February 2025. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you very much, the motion is carried. Moving on, item N is new business, council any new business? Routed this time? Seeing none? Okay, moving on, no any notices of motion at this time? Seeing none. Moving on to our procedural bylaw. Moving on to our procedural bylaw. Being a bylaw to amend, procedure bylaw 24-017. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Holoka, thank you. And deputy mayor, Miss Comins. Any discussion on this item, council? Seeing none at this time? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much, the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to our confirmatory bylaw, moved by councillor Brunel, thank you. Seconded by deputy mayor, Miss Comins. Confirmatory bylaw is that bylaw 25-008, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, be passed and enacted this fourth day of February 2025. All those in favor? Thank you very much, the motion is carried unanimously. And moving on to adjournment. 7:19 PM. Moved by councillor Brunel. Seconded by councillor Holoka. That the regular meeting of council for February 4th, 2025, adjourn at 7:19 PM. All those in favor? Thank you very much, that's carried unanimously. The meeting is now closed. Thank you very much for those of you in person and following along online. We'll take a brief 10-minute break and we'll be back for the committee of the whole with deputy mayor, Miss Comins, chairing. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, February 4th. I officially call the meeting to order and just remind the audience that this presentation tonight is audio and video recorded. And if you could please ensure that any of your cellular devices, computers, et cetera, are turned to silent mode. That would be great. Counsel, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. We discussed the pooling of the one item tonight. Is there anything else that's not included on the agenda? All right. Can I get a mover and second? Thank you, Counselor Holoka. Mayor Evans, a second. Thank you. That the agenda for the Committee of the Whole be accepted as amended. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. Counsel, anybody see any declaration of pecuniary interest that they'd like to bring forward at this time? Not seeing any. So if you do find yourself in that situation, please identify and we will deal with it in that moment. Item C, reports of consultants and third parties. So we've removed the one item and we are on C2. Axima Insurance Services and the County of Simcoe Insurance Pool. And we've got Kerry Green from Axima Insurance and Aaron Guthrie from the County of Simcoe. You're going to stay in the audience? All right. Just in case we have any questions, we can call upon you, right?
My name is Ryan Durrell and I'll be playing the role of Kerry Green tonight.
Sorry.
As originally scheduled, she was going to be in your council, but with the change, I was able to come in her place. So buckle up because it's a pretty exciting presentation. That is the title slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. So by way of background, in response to insurance premium uncertainty over recent years, Simcoe County and the participating municipalities looked at alternatives to the traditional insurance model to look for opportunities for improvements in costs and cost stability. We've already undergone due diligence to determine that there is in fact feasibility and a strong business case for the implementation of an alternative. And now implementation is underway and we're seeking commitment from the municipalities. Next slide. The proposed solution after review is a municipal insurance pool. It won't be the first in Ontario. There are two existing municipality insurance pools. Waterloo and Durham both have pools established in 1998 and 2000 respectively. You might be asking, why has it taken 25 years for us to bring forward a new insurance pool? The reality is that in the time between 2000 and 2025, we had a very long, soft insurance market where insurance rates and premiums were going down over time till about 2018, 2019, when we started to see a hard market return, which is what created those premium instabilities, which ultimately have municipalities and other groups looking at alternatives like the pool. That said, the two pools that do exist continue to deliver significant value to their members during that long period. It's just that in these uncertain times, we look for the institution of new alternatives. Next slide. So why start an insurance pool? Next slide. Fundamentally, insurance, as we purchase it most of the time, is quite expensive. Looking at the projected premiums for the pool through the feasibility study was determined that an estimate of $20.6 million of insurance premiums were going to be spent by the 18 municipalities, including the county. And out of that $20.6 million, only about 34 cents on the dollar was expected to be paid for losses and claims. The remaining 66 cents on the dollar were going to things such as profit and risk margin for the insurer. And about 35% was going to operating expenses for the insurer, including marketing expenses, et cetera. Broker compensation for the placement of 18 different insurance policies and collections of policies, as it were, and premium taxes. Next slide. So a great analogy for self-insurance, which is fundamentally what we're proposing with the insurance pool and traditional insurance, is that self-insurance is like making your own meals at home and insurance is like dining out. The results might be the same, but there's reasons why you do both. Next slide. So why do we buy insurance? First and foremost, convenience. It creates annual cost certainty. We see the price on the menu. We pay that and we don't have to think about it until we return again. So annual cost certainty and the convenience of it is fantastic. Next slide. Specialty items. We go to restaurants to prepare things that we can't do at home. I've probably said this about 25 times by now, but I can make a mean plate of spaghetti. And so I don't usually get it at restaurants, but I will go out for sushi because I don't trust myself to cut raw fish and serve it to myself. Just like that with insurance, we transfer the risks that we can't or don't want to accept. That might be specialized things like cyber insurance, or it might be very large losses, like 10 or 15 million dollar losses. Those are things we don't want to accept. Next slide. And service, especially for smaller municipalities, claims and risk management services are embedded in insurance coverage. So in that single price, we get all the services that we need in order to carry on with risk management and claims. Next slide. So why should we buy less insurance? And again, we're not proposing we don't buy insurance. We're just proposing we buy less. First and foremost, cost, pun intended. Insurance comes at a premium, as we mentioned off the top. Next slide. This microphone is fantastic, by the way. In-house capabilities. As we build out our in-house capabilities, could we do more things like for ourselves, like make spaghetti? We can reduce the amount of insurance and we should, because we can do it more cost effectively and in a more custom way suits our needs, including servicing claims and incidents as well as risk management. Next slide. How do we go about doing this, then? Well, first and foremost, one way to avoid purchasing insurance is to implement risk management. Another way to reduce the amount of insurance is to increase deductibles, but doing so does create volatility, especially among smaller municipalities. So the proposal's to use pooling to reduce that volatility by using essentially the fundamentals of insurance to our own advantage. And also to create that central resource to coordinate and deliver claims and risk management. So building out our in-house capabilities in Simcoe County. Next slide. What's your insurance coverage going to look like as a township? It's going to be fundamentally the same. Instead of 18 small insurance policies across the group, it would be one very large policy covering all. The coverages will be, if not the same or largely the same, it might be better because you'll have access as a smaller municipality to larger limits, because that's what we purchased to cover off the larger groups. So coverage should be largely the same or better than what you have today. Next slide. The pool structure, just to put it in pictures, looks as follows. And the blue bar at the bottom will continue to be the municipality's deductible. And municipalities should and will continue to have individual deductibles for which they will be responsible. That keeps us accountable for claims. Above that amount, however, will be a new layer, which will be the pooled layer. And that'll bring the amount of retained or self-insured component up to $500,000. Above that, we will continue to buy insurance for those risks that we can't or don't want to retain. So we will continue to buy insurance. I'm happy to take questions.
No, I just have a question. Should that be on the pool on number two, should it be to $499,999 instead of $400,000?
No, it'll be right up to $500,000. The next penny after $500,000 will be insured.
I know, but it... Oh, we're on the... I'm on the wrong slide. Okay. My apologies.
Next slide. So speaking of deductibles, one of the key things as we go into this new insurance pool structure is to standardize the deductibles that all municipalities of similar size are participating in the same way to promote fairness. So this is a schedule of how those deductibles will be laid out by municipality size and by coverage. It is important to note that adjustments have been made to the levies, which will be the replacement for premiums, to make sure that municipalities are compensated if deductibles go up by having reduced levies, which are essentially the premiums. Next slide. So going back to that chart, what happens if we have a very large claim? It's one of the more common questions. If we have a $15 million loss, are we just going to be wiped out and back to square one with no coverage? Absolutely not. First and foremost, the municipality will pay its deductible, just like it does today. So let's say, for example, $10,000. Then the pool will cover just $490,000 of the $15 million. And we will still have insurance policies in place with an excess insurer who will then cover the next $14.5 million. Getting insurers to do what they do best, large unpredictable losses, while we maintain the predictable losses within the layer that we're comfortable with. Next slide. So the proposed program versus the status quo. So just revisiting the status quo, the gray bar is $20.6 million. As mentioned off the top, that's a projection of the 2025 total premiums. And the municipalities are collectively retaining about $1.8 million, as shown in the blue. Next slide. We're going to change it up and we're going to reduce the amount of insurance from $20.6 million down to 7.7. So that's the green area in the chart there. That's the portion we're going to buy with, that's the excess insurance. And we're going to use the $8.4 million in yellow to fund the pooled component. And that includes the expenses, the risk margin and surplus. And we'll be able to dive into the details there. In doing so, that restructuring will generate up to 19.2% savings over the status quo. So a significant savings is available. Next slide. That said, this won't create two different structures and more complexity for the municipalities. It will be seen as a single levy of about $16.1 million. Next slide. And looking behind the scenes to get a little bit of additional detail about how that's all going to work, of the $16.1 million, $4.5 million is expected annually by way of losses for all 18 municipalities, including the county. $815,000 has been earmarked by the actuaries for additional stability. So that's the risk margin to make sure that we have more than enough money four years out of five. $1.575 million has been allotted out of the levy to fund the administration, the operations. So that includes staff who are going to provide the risk management and claim service, as well as the claims management system that will be made available to the municipalities, as well as finance, audit, actuarial, et cetera. $7.7 million, as we mentioned, is the budget for the excess insurance. And at the far, far side of that chart is a $1.5 million contribution to surplus, which is not an additional amount being asked for by the municipalities, but it's baked into the levy for the initial few years to make sure that we have more than enough money to cover off anything that comes our way. But let's hold on to that thought for a moment. Next slide. How are we generating this nearly 20% savings? Fundamentally, we're doing it by reducing the amount of commercial for-profit insurance and establishing a pool that will manage a meaningful portion of the losses on a not-for-profit basis. Approximately only one claim a year is expected to be paid by the excess insurer. We will be handling almost everything internally within the group, the new pool. We'll also be consolidating 18 insurance placements, up to 18 insurance placements, and reducing insurance brokerage costs by a significant factor. And then there may actually be additional savings not reflected in the analysis, as we bring in-house capabilities online within the pool to potentially reduce the costs of managing those claims even further. So there might be additional savings there. Next slide. So planning for stability, even though 19.2% savings is feasible and available, working with the technical working group, including many of the municipalities, we've proposed, and the proposal that we're bringing today, is to defer 9.2% of those savings to provide a 10% direct savings over the status quo to the municipalities and use the 9.2 to provide a belt and suspenders startup approach for enhanced stability, as well as create a second and even a third wave of savings down the road and smooth out year-over-year budgeting. So we just want to defer the savings and deliver it later in order to ensure that it's successful. Next slide. Again, pun intended. How does this stack up? So the actuaries have proposed an $815,000 risk margin. They've also proposed a $1.5 million surplus contribution. And through this deferral of savings, we're going to add $2 million on top of that to accelerate into putting ourselves in a very positive surplus position. This gives us a buffer of about $1.4 million. That's roughly equal to the total claims we expect to pay. So we'll be very quickly in a strong surplus position, all while still delivering a 10% savings over expiring premiums. Next slide. So how this will play out over the coming years is initially, as you can see, starting on the far left, status quo, the gray bar, that's your $20.6 million. You will see an immediate 10% savings in the upcoming year for the new pool with 9.2% deferred. Around year three, we'll have more than enough surplus and be able to stop the contribution of $1.5 million, which will expand that savings to 16.7%. Still deferring savings. And at some point around year five or six, we'll be able to get rid of the last 9.2% deferred savings to stretch that savings out to about 26% over status quo. So we'll see a continual release of savings over time to the municipalities participating. Next slide. Some operational considerations. The planned launch date is June 1st. You'll be pleased to know that is convenient for absolutely nobody. While the various Simcoe municipalities have renewal dates throughout the year, January 1st, April, July, nobody has June. So just to be fair to everybody, we made it inconvenient for everybody. But it's a great date because administratively, it's very convenient for insurers. They've already arranged their reinsurance. It also means that your levies, which are a replacement for your premiums, will be known well ahead of budgeting time to make that easier for staff. And it brings some of that insurance renewal stuff off cycle from budgeting, again, to ease administration. The current policies do allow for cancellation midterm. And there are in some cases, some minor penalties, a short rate premium, cancellation premium. But that's more than offset by the savings being provided by the pool out of the gate, and that would only be for a partial year. Joining will require signing on to a subscribers agreement, which creates the pool. It has a five-year initial commitment to ensure stability and provide the negotiating power with the excess insurers. The other thing it does is make sure that all the municipalities get to see the full breadth of savings over that five-year period as outlined earlier. It creates an advisory board, which will be responsible for governing the pool with one seat per municipality and one vote each regardless of size. So even the smallest municipality and the largest will have the same vote on the board. The advisory board will ultimately be responsible for setting the levies or the premiums annually with the input of an actuary. And the pool manager, who will be hired in to provide the ongoing day-to-day operations, will report to that advisory board, even though they might technically be an employee of one of the municipalities. It also lays out the entry and exit conditions for the pool. So if at some point after that five years, a municipality wants to leave, they can do that. More of that in a moment. Next slide. Just in case you're worried that there's not more, this is the last slide, so enjoy it as best you can. Not all municipalities are required for launch. We had modeled only 50% and 75% joining. And we're able to determine that at least that savings proposed was possible. We're now past that phase, so we're past the viability stage, so the pool will be moving forward. Accumulated surplus will need to be matched for anybody looking to join after the initial period. So because we mentioned, there's about $4.4 million of surplus being created just by being a member, even though you're getting savings. If you try and join later, you have to pay catch-up and it will be perceived as an additional cost. Members looking to join later may also not meet the criteria for joining, which will be established by the advisory board. So it could be that if you had significant claims, it might be challenging to join. And the other thing is the pool advisory board may simply not admit or accept new members. As we heard from the Waterloo pool, they've been approached many times and they have not allowed any new members in because they're simply happy with how things are going now and see no need to expand. Last but not least, pool staff, so the risk manager and staff, will coordinate the services that you're used to getting from the insurer currently, including risk management services, which will be customized to the county and its municipalities, claims handling, including appointment of adjusters and events council, organization of the several meetings a year that will take place, and coordinating inspections. So other than appointing somebody within tiny staff to sit on the advisory board, we're not looking to add any burden to the existing staff. Essentially, you're replacing your insurer with the pool who will coordinate all those services. And that is the last slide.
That's great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Turn things over to counsel. Does anybody have any questions? Mayor Evans, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you again for the presentation. I've seen it twice now and certainly in favor of it. I just have one question about, you talked about poor loss experience with other municipalities. And could you just, I assume that you have gone through all the 18 that were being considered for this. Does this setup align with past loss experience with the potential 18 members?
Yes. All 18 municipalities provided historical claims data. All of it was looked at. The actuaries concluded that the municipalities were largely similar to one another. And the odd claim that was a large claim was largely what we'd call a lightning strike event, therefore rather random, not sort of coalescing around a single municipality. If there is poorer loss experience as emerges over time, then the levies will adjust to allow for that municipality to cover their losses in time, similar to the way the regular insurance market does. If you perform poorly on losses, your premiums will go up. The same thing will happen within the pool structure. The one nice thing about the pool structure is if your losses are better than expected, you will see those credits proactively applied to reduce. So municipalities will largely be paying their own way with some spreading of risk, as you would expect. So it's really about smoothing out the larger events. But let's say, and a great example would be, let's say a municipality proactively decides to buy, build the largest skate park in Ontario. That might come with some additional claims. If those little, those additional claims, which are pretty much expected, generate more losses, then you might see your levy go up, just like you would expect it to. So if you undertake riskier activities, levies will go up. If you proactively work on risk management to reduce it, you'll see levies go down. So it really doesn't function much differently than the regular insurance market, except it's smoother and more transparent.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And one more, if I could.
Please, go ahead.
Actually, it's to Deputy CIO, and I don't want to put you, I will put you as to the question, but I want to put you on the spot. In terms of, I don't know when our cycle is up for our current insurance policy, have we taken into consideration any fees or fines that might be involved with early termination or anything like that?
Thank you for that question, Mayor Evans. That's a great question. On the report that you'll see in front of you later on in the evening, CSFIN0225, I do detail out the potential costs. And the broker has actually got back to me and said that it is a 10% short. So it will, we do have enough in our budget this year. Our insurance costs actually came in much lower than what we budgeted for. So even with that expense, we have more than enough to cover that. So hopefully that answers your question.
Perfect. No, that's great. Those are the only two concerns I had, and I'm fully in favor of this. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Other members of council, any questions? Counselor Burnout?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. I've got a few questions. Now, you said something about, there's only been two pools since 2020. I'm sorry, 2000, there was Regional Waterloo and which one?
Durham Region.
Durham, thank you. But since 2018, you mentioned that there's been more interest because of higher risk, I guess. And so there's more need for insurance and insurance premiums are rising. What do you think is the main cause of the rise in premiums?
I think it's the volatility of insurance premiums and the rapid rise of premiums are driving municipalities and other groups to look at alternatives. The core reason why insurance premiums, and this is just my personal opinion, so looking at the loss history from, available from OSFI, which is the federal regulator of financial institutions, including insurance companies, you can quite easily look and see what their financial health looks like. Prior to about 2018, 19, really, they were running in some sectors significant deficits, and it wasn't possible or feasible for them to continue along that line. So largely within the industry, I think we considered it to be a technical hard market, so it was an adjustment of prices, seeing that they, you know, they needed to achieve better profitability in order to continue to attract investment for insurers. So that was largely why that hard market started, is simply because they were not collecting enough premiums. Premiums had dropped to an unsustainable amount and they had to come up. Like I said, the previous pools continued to operate in that environment successfully and deliver value, not because they weren't covering their losses, but because they had lower cost structures. So it's really about, more about achieving efficiencies by being not-for-profit. That's where the savings is coming from. The losses are the losses, and we will continue to need to cover them just the same way as insurers do now.
Great. Thank you. Do you see an increase in popularity in these pools? Like, are there more municipalities that want to do, regional municipalities that want to do this?
I'm not at liberty to say how many municipalities are looking at it. I know there's other structures at play. Case in point, we assisted a group of public entities in Quebec form a reciprocal insurance exchange, which is like more formal version of an insurance pool, just last, just about 18 months ago. So other entities are looking at the same thing and implementing the same thing. But as for Ontario municipalities, at this point, I'm not at liberty to say.
Yeah. No, my question was, do you see a more of a popularity for the pools, like more municipalities? I didn't ask for.
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. Absolutely. And I think, yes, absolutely.
So does, you answered the question that I had about, does every municipality have to participate? No, but you're saying the figures are based on 75% participation rate?
What I mentioned is, the pool still works and could provide the 10% savings being proposed with as little as 50% participation. With the municipalities that have already committed to participating, that we've seen already, we're already past the 50% threshold. So it's, we're past the point where we're wondering whether or not the pool is going to move forward. It's moving forward. It's just whether or not the remaining municipalities are participating.
So a question is, if there's 100% participation, is there going to be more than 19.2% savings?
The 19.2% was based on 100% participation, but it doesn't reduce dramatically unless you get below 50%. The economics still work.
Okay. A couple more, two more questions. The Regional Waterloo, you mentioned at the end there that not, they're not allowing other municipalities, you said, nor beginning to join. Is that strictly a decision from the advisory board? Is there any other factors? Like, I'm not quite sure why they would have stopped a municipality who didn't join and beginning to join eventually.
Based on what staff has told us, their advisory board has not elected to allow new municipalities to join their pool over time. And I think you have to just surmise because things are working well the way they are, and why introduce a new variable at this point, 27 years into their operation?
And the last question, this advisory board governs the pool, one seat per municipality, does that seat have to be someone from council, someone from staff, or someone, or could it be possible a resident beyond this advisory board?
I think modeled after the Waterloo and Durham pools, it's somebody from staff with a relevant background in finance or insurance.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Holoka, any questions?
No.
All right. I just have one. Memory serves, typically when there's talk about these municipal pools happening, the insurers come in suddenly with a brand-new rate for municipalities that looks great for a year, but then they slowly increase. Is that something that you've experienced in the past? And could that be a reason why a municipality may decide not to join because they're getting the instant gratification of a lower premium?
I mean, I suppose theoretically it could be. Thus far, that's not been the experience. I think we were anticipating a 5% increase based on the actuaries' loss pick for premium trend. It's largely come in between 1 and It's largely come in between 1 and 6.5%. Some municipalities I've heard about have seen as high as 20% increases. The odd municipality who may have been, in my view, overpaying historically, might see a significant reduction if they go to market and look to RFP. But I think fundamentally insurers are not, they're not charitable entities. So they typically, the premiums are calculated to more than offset the losses. It's possible, we haven't seen it so far, not in Simcoe County anyways, have we seen significant reductions year over year for the 2025 renewal period.
Right, okay. Thank you. CIO Lamb.
Thank you, Deputy. So this kind of all started as conversations at the county CIO table, and I will say, I think I had a small part in it because I was exposed to the Durham Pool when I went to Brock. And my Director of Finance was actually one of the main administrators of the pool on behalf of the other municipalities. So I got a very quick understanding of what they were doing differently than what we are, and was very surprised that we hadn't looked at starting our own. And so then when I came back, we entered into the conversations at the CIO table and started to gauge the interest in it. And having a couple of ex-Director of Finances as CIOs took that conversation quickly to the next level, and the county then jumped in to be able to kind of lead the charge on it. Because this does make sense when we have, we have a lot of commonality in place. It does provide an ability for us to get more cost certainties and have it level the playing field for us. Your Director of Finance has been part of the steering committee working group that has been getting things to this point. And kind of to Counselor Brunel's question, do strongly recommend that this be kept at the staff, staff treasury-type level, where you have all of the people that are speaking the same language, understanding what the risk and keeping that, hopefully consistent board. You don't want to have people changing all the time because there is a lot to learn and a lot to understand. So you want to be able to make sure that you have, it's not a political thing, it's not a, it's not a potentially airport commission or something like that. This is creating an entity that will manage our risks, and our finance people are the ones that are most worried all the time about those cost securities, certainties in our risk management.
That's great. Thanks, CIO Lamb. Or, oh, sorry.
If I may, yeah, if I may, also just add a bit more information. Knowing, the broker knowing that this is being discussed, has picked up this information from the media, did reach out to me directly, and I want to share some information that they provided because, you know, just for transparency. So the information that they're providing is basically advice to increase our deductibles, which, if we did that with the pool, we'd be saving money there too. So that is on public entity general liabilities and errors and omissions. So at any time, we could have received that information and done some changes to our deductibles, but it just puts more risk back onto the township. Property premium guaranteed rate would be applied against the township's property values for a period of three years, subject to having a loss ratio no greater than 50% at the end of each policy term. I don't anticipate that would be any different than what we're doing with the pool. The difference with the pool is really we're eliminating the for-profit component, so that's, that's the savings for the most part.
That's great. Thanks, Deputy CIO. Any further questions? All right. Got a recommendation in front of me, that the presentation from Acema Insurance Services regarding the County of Simcoe Insurance Pool proposal be received as information. It's moved by Counselor Brunel, seconded by Counselor Holoka. All those in favor? And that carries 4-0.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Haley, thank you so much for all your help.
Have a great evening. All right, we are in Section D, Staff Reports Consent Items. Remote recommendation in front of me that the following consent items under Section D1 Staff Reports be received as information. County Council Update Highlights for January 14, 2025. ESR-001-25. Fire and Emergency Services Fourth Quarter 2024 Activity. Contractor Pre-qualifications. Heronia Animal Control Report from December 2024. And PD-001-25. Committee of Adjustment Activity Report 2024. Counsel, anything you'd wish to pull from this?
No.
All right, can I, sorry, Mayor Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Not to pull, just to comment on the procurement policy. If I could, just a question to Director Leach, given the events transpiring at a national level, can you maybe just ballpark, maybe now or later, do we do business or any procurement with suppliers south of the border?
We've had those discussions within our department, you know, obviously with some of the new structures that we're looking at, the new facility in the Tuanchi Pavilion. Fortunately, in those builds, we are looking at a mass timber type build, which is, thankfully, Canada's probably one of the best mass timber producers around. The vast majority of our projects, again, fortunately, roadwork, those types of things, our asphalt is all here. So we're looking at, there may be some items that we're going to be very cautious on moving forward, but I think the vast majority of ours are things like aggregate, asphalt, road construction, those types of projects, we should not see any real impact. When it comes to our facilities and those types of things, we will be looking at our sourcing decisions to be, you know, Canadian and the least impact that might happen. So it's something that we are aware of, something we did actually, talked about this later, latter part of last week, as terrorists did hit, so we'll be keeping a close eye on it.
Perfect. Just want to make sure we're addressing any risk concerns moving forward.
Yes, definitely.
Great question. Excellent. Any further questions on any of these reports? No? All right, can I get a mover? Counselor Holoka. Seconded by Counselor Brunel. All those in favor? That carries 4-0. Thank you. All right, moving on to Section D2, Matters for Consideration. I've pulled D2.1, so we're on D2.2, Corporate Services Report, CES-FIN-002-25, Participation in the Simcoe County Insurance Pool. Deputy CIO, would you like to, just a little bit of background further to the presentation we had?
Sure, I'm happy to provide some more information. So just going back about a year ago, we began by giving a lot of this information to Acema to conduct their study. It went back five years. An in-depth actuarial analysis was completed by Acema and their actuarial consultants. A volunteer group, which included myself, from several municipalities participated in this technical working group. Subscribers will gain control and reduce our expenses by anywhere between 13 and 20%. As you saw in the presentation, there are three layers to the claim pool process. The township is responsible for the deductible. The deductibles that they are building in for the township of Tiny do not change compared to what we are playing right now today with the various liabilities. But it is a five-year commitment to join the pool. There is two insurance policies that we will still have to purchase on our own, it's not included under the pool. It's cyber and environmental impairment liability. Cyber costs about $24,000 for this year, and environmental impairment liability is about $9,000. So as I mentioned earlier this evening, the budget for the insurance policy for 2025 was budgeted at about 10% increase. It came in at 1.43% increase. So that savings was actually a realized savings for this year. However, if council does approve to move forward with the pool and we cancel our insurance, we will get refunded prorated, less 10%. So that 10% will actually be a cost, an expense this year, but still will be under our budget. So, yeah, that's the summary.
That's great, thank you. Deputy CIO, any questions? Yes, Counselor Brunel.
Yes, through you, Chair. Director Leblanc, I didn't quite catch the two insurances that we still need to acquire, even though we go with the pool. So one was cyber at $25,000?
Yes, and the other one is environmental impairment liability, which is a cost of $9,000.
$9,000?
Yeah.
Okay. Impairment liability, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, I've got a motion in front of me then, that says that Corporate Services Report, CES-FIN-002-25, Regarding Simcoe County Municipal Insurance Pool Be Received, and that staff be directed to complete and submit the Form of Subscription within the Subscriber's Agreement by March 1, 2025, to allow the county time to set up the advisory board and allow for the Township of Tiny to become one of the founding subscribers effective June 1, 2025, and that the Director of Corporate Services, Deputy CIO, be selected as the township's representative to the pool advisory board. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Mayor Evans, thank you. And Counselor Holoka. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously, thank you. All right, Section 2.3, Public Works Report, PWR-002-25, Township of Tiny Snow Fencing Trial. Director Leach.
I'd provide a brief summary. This is based on a previous council request to investigate, looking into a snow fence program. This year is a good example of what happens when we get the amount of snow. We sent out a notification, by the way, that we received double the typical amount we would receive in January this year. So everybody's experiencing the same thing with the amount of snow. We did look at this and tried to talk to some of the local farmers. Unfortunately, this is something that is difficult to do. The farmers have various, it's not that they're not willing to help, but there is some restrictions that you do, and some of the issues that they have brought to our attention. A lot of it's outlined in this report, for example, volunteer corn, for example, they leave rows of corn up. It does, it does cause, when they go back in in the spring to get, it does leave some behind and can have some crop contamination within their crops. Also, farmers want to do proper crop rotation, so one year it might be corn, the next year it might be other product. And it's also very difficult where a lot of the farms do use, sometimes use outside contractors to come in and remove the crops from the fields, and also now they're going in the fields in the spring to remove that row. The county does have a program in place where they do compensate farmers for that lost crop in order to keep it up. So we've looked at various different options, so we're going to continue, as the report says, we're going to continue to look at, investigate this year, talking to more farmers to see who would be willing to continue to do this using the model from the county. But one thing we wanted to do this year, and it's something that we propose, is to put in about between 500 and 1,000 meters of double row fencing. Underneath the, we are permitted to go in for this type of thing and install this on properties without their permission, basically, but we prefer to do the other route and have cooperation. And we have some staff that we could have this installed, or for a trial year, we have a contractor, that would be one of our fencing contractors, that could come in and try it out for a year, see what the effectiveness is. It's about a $7,500 trial that we are looking at doing. And we think this would be a great way to understand what the cost of putting the fencing is, what the benefits are, and to move forward. So that's what Public Works is, would like to propose for the 25, 26 winter season, and we'd be funding it through the snow plowing materials budget, but like I said, it's about $7,500. Some of the other things that we do to try to minimize the impacts of drifting snow, for example, in the fall, we do our final cutting of our roadside mowing, and that's a big help because that allows the snow just to blow across the roads. So various other different activities that we're doing like that, and obviously our plow activity to try and keep up with the drifting snow in the various areas. Thank you.
That's great, thanks, Director Leach. I'm going to go to Counselor Holoka, and then I'll come over to you, Mayor Evans. Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Director Leach, how many township roads have we closed to date due to blowing snow? Do you know, like roughly, one dozen, two dozen, six?
Officially, we have not officially closed roads, but the roads have been closed due to winter conditions, the last snow event, and this is all purely high-level, unsubstantiated, unaudited numbers. But in just in discussing the crews that night, we probably had, I bet you, five or six locations that had road closures that the drifting was so bad that our plows can't even get through it. It does get thick, and then we have to get our grader in and our loaders to move the snow. So it could, and it's typically in all the common spots, our concession roads, a lot of our east-west roads, once you get up on top of the ridge, all of our concession roads are, vast majority of them have that type of exposure.
And just to follow up, for the future, would it be possible to maybe plant hedges or some type of natural barriers that would assist moving forward?
That would be, through the chair, of course, that's, that would be the preferred route. Unfortunately, in a lot of those east-west concession roads, the farms come right up to the edge of the, and that's all crop, crop land. But that's one of the options we did talk about, is working with individuals to try and have that in. The other thing is, is as it notes in the report, the distance that you have it back, it was, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but there's a height of the fence, I think it's 40, 40 to 1, the height of the fence, and then you go back from the road to have an effective snow fence. The idea of the snow fence is, it hits it, it goes around, and it stops on the other side of that. And so when you have, sometimes you have stuff right at the edge of the road, it really doesn't, sometimes it does not accomplish what you want to accomplish. But those are things that we do look at, but sometimes there's restriction due to the farm, farm land being brought right up to the edge of the fence.
Fair enough, thank you. Thanks, Counselor. Holoka, Mayor Evans.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And you got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Just, I just read the rule of thumb is that it should be placed 35 times the height of the fence back from the road. So 1.2-meter-high orange residential snow fence, which we're all familiar with, would be 42 meters back. So Counselor Holoka's point about the hedge, I'm a big, you know, I'm a member of County Road 6, the sugar maples that are on the side of the road, they're all pretty much dead now and gone, but then the farms have appropriated somewhat that land where they used to be. Would be nice, albeit, you know, big tree supporter myself, but it would take an awful long time to get them going, and they would be right on the road because it was down in another area where they have still some, and the snow still does come through. So I'd love to have the trees there from aesthetic perspective too, but I think that this is, this is a much better solution. As far as the cost goes, I think this is, well, my personal experience a couple weeks ago, just north of County Road 6, sorry, concession 6 on County Road 6, and I personally stopped at about five or six cars that had just driven off the road. And, because you can't see, right? And then it was dark as well, so, you know, you make sure people have gas, enough gas, and, you know, call less, you know, call the tow truck company and get in line to do that. Tow trucking is not cheap, so in the context of $7,500, I think that that was probably spent by those people that were on the side of County Road 6 that night. So I think this is, this is a great opportunity to test this out. I agree with you, in terms of the farmers leaving like corn up and everything, if they, you mentioned they change crops, that contaminates it, so it's, and if we can, you know, work with them, you know, we don't, I wouldn't like to see us just go on the land and just plunk it down. But working with them in a nice cooperative manner would be, I think would be a great opportunity, and I look forward to seeing the results. The other thing you mentioned about, I'm speaking about a north-south road and a prevailing northwest winds, so it'd be interesting to see, like, make sure we do like an east-west and a north-south and some different, so we can see some different results and see how it works moving forward. I think that would be worthwhile as well, but, no, fully support this. I think this is, this is a really great opportunity, and the idea that it is 42 meters back from the road, I think that that's, that's... meters back from the road, I think that that's, uh, that's, you know, it's, it's not just trying to come up with the same old, it's something new, and I think that's a great opportunity. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
And, um, on that point, the, uh, what will be, we'll work with our operators, um, the plow operators, they're the ones that know where all the, the bad spots are and all the, uh, not as bad spots, and so we'll work and we'll look at some different, uh, variety and orientations of roads for the trial. Thank you.
Counselor Brunel.
Mister Chair.
Oh, sorry, here, I did not know you were there, Counselor Walma. Um, yeah, I, can I go to Counselor Brunel first, just because I called him and then I'll come back to you?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brunel.
Great, thank you, uh, Chair. Couple of questions, um, so, uh, Director Leach, you mentioned about, uh, road closures, uh, there haven't been, but unofficially the plows have stopped plowing at certain times. Uh, but I guess the, the residents still ha- if they want to use the roads, it's to use at their own risk at that time when they're, if, if the plows are not plowing, how are they going to know that the plows are not plowing? Um, is there like an alert that is presently, presently, uh, issued by the township?
Yes.
To residents?
Yep, uh, that's, uh, thank you, actually, that's a, a good, uh, thing. We had that as part of, uh, that communication that just went out, uh, about the excessive amount of snow in the good old-fashioned winter. Um, and also the fact that, uh, this year we've had to do the, um, a significant weather event and that'll go out through Tiny Connect. And, and we put that out when we feel that we can't meet the minimum, we may not be able to meet the minimum maintenance standard, um, which the council has adopted, uh, it was in twenty twenty, I believe, we adopted the minimum maintenance standard, which tells us that we have X amount of time to clear the roads. When it accumulates at a certain depth, based on the class of road, how much time do we have to, uh, to get that road clear? And it's typically, um, for example, if there's a, a class four road at fifty kilometers an hour, when it gets to eight centimeters, we have twenty-four hours, uh, to clear that road. So if we can't maintain those standards, we will put out an advisory and then that will make it that the roads are considered in repair or under repair. And, um, the other thing that we do, if we can't keep up, um, i- is, uh, our plow drivers, we have to make sure that they get rest. Um, that's the other reason why. Um, since I've been here, we haven't had to pull the plows off the road because of the weather, uh, but we have had to delay, uh, some of our clearing activity in order for them to get the proper sleep and, um, and rest that they're required to stay on, on the game. Uh, it's, it's a very strenuous when you're out there for ten, twelve hours, uh, you, you know what it's like to drive an hour in this type of conditions? You can imagine if you're ten, twelve hours, uh, driving around with a huge machine, uh, with all that weight you're carrying in the back, it's a lot of responsibility. Um, so we will advise the public through a tiny connect when we cannot meet those minimum maintenance standards.
Very good, uh, and, uh, s- last question is, uh, we're only talking about township roads, right? We're not ta- talking about county roads? And, um, so how can this municipality, uh, ask the county to do a similar trial, uh, on the county roads in our municipality? Is it a motion from council? Is it the residents needed a deputation at, at county? Like, wh- what can be done?
The, uh, the county is, uh, is, does have an active program in this. Um, and I've, in the report, it does talk about us working with, continuing to work with the county, so we'll make sure that, that, uh, those requests are, are made and that, um, they, they struggle the same as we will in getting those types of agreements in place, uh, with the farming community. And I'm not saying that the farmers are being, uh, resistant or not cooperative, it's just a, a reality of the business that, uh, that they're operating.
Great, thank you.
Right, thank you, uh, Counselor Walma.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak through you to Director Leach, uh, big thank you. Uh, I think, uh, that, uh, I, I'm one hundred percent in favor going forward with the program, um, from a, uh, first responder perspective. Uh, not only do, uh, we have, uh, uh, the public that are put into hazards and blowing snow conditions, but it's also our first responders responding to calls in those events, and it's always those days that they're going to calls. So I, that is, uh, uh, this will be a huge benefit, uh, on stormy days. Um, speaking to the county program, this was, uh, uh, we've, they, they've had great success with it on the cornrows, and I think that, uh, step one, absolutely, let's do the snow fencing seventy-five-hundred-dollar option, uh, and see how it works. And then in the future, I'd even say that we start working, uh, with farmers, even purchase those crops every year so that they can plant them. There's got to be ways to make it, you know, there all the time. So I'm excited to see it happen, thank you very much. And I got to give credit, uh, where credit's due, uh, this was actually, uh, an idea brought forward by past Fire Chief, uh, Mister Mintoff. So, uh, thank you for making it happen, appreciate it.
Director Leach?
Yeah, thank you, uh, uh, Counselor Walma too. Yes, that's exactly what the, I think I alluded to that, that the county does have a compensation program in place for the farmers, um, and the, the people who own the property adjacent to the, uh, property lines. So that's something that we'll be continuing to look at too.
Wonderful. All right, any further discussion, Council? All right, I have a motion in front of me that Public Works Report P W R dash zero zero two dash two five regarding snow fencing be received and that council approves option one of the report and directs staff to perform a snow fencing trial for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six winter at a cost of seventy-five-hundred dollars and to report back on the results. Moved by Counselor Walma, seconded by Counselor Halaoka. All those in favor?
In favor.
Thank you, Counselor Walma. That carries five, nothing. All right, we are on section D two dot four, Planning and Development Report P D dash zero zero two dash two five, Backyard Chickens Temporary Use Zoning Bylaw Amendment Direction Report. Director Hunt, would you like to give us some background on this?
Sure, thank you Chair. Um, I, this is a topic that was brought up through the comprehensive review of the zoning bylaw in twenty twenty-two, and, uh, there was general support from the public and from council at that time, but because it was such a, a large topic, it was decided that it warranted its own public process and, and analysis. So, um, this report represents the planning department's initial, um, uh, review of, uh, best practices, what other municipalities are doing in terms of backyard chickens. Right now, we do have permissions for the keeping of poultry on, you know, agricultural properties as well as, um, on res- rural residential properties, um, as a hobby farm. Those pro- those properties are generally large in nature and have, you know, um, larger setbacks. So, um, this, we've put together some preliminary regulations that, um, we think are appropriate for, uh, the township specifically, um, and we're, you know, proposing that the, um, the, the use be temporary in nature, so for up to three years as a sort of pilot project to test it out. Um, we have put together sort of a draft bylaw for just kind of review purposes that have some of the regulations in there, such as setbacks to lot lines, setbacks to, uh, neighboring dwellings, um, prohibition of the use on certain lands that are zoned, uh, for example, shoreline, residential, um, and outside of our environmental protection zones, so things like that, um, prohibiting roosters, um, so, uh, some of these are very standard, uh, across the municipalities, and some of them are specific to Tiny Township for what we think would be appropriate. So, um, this report is, is laying out the information needed to make the decision of whether or not we want to move forward with, uh, public consultation under the Planning Act to get public feedback on, on the, uh, on the proposal. Um, and so if that were the direction, we would, um, you know, uh, advertise for that and hold a statutory public meeting, uh, receive comments from the public and from council, and then again, that would be the time that a decision would be made of whether or not, uh, a temporary use bylaw would be enacted or some other direction given. So happy to answer any questions about that.
That's great, thanks Director Hunt. Questions from Council? Mayor Evans?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, appreciate that. Um, yeah, through your question to Director Hunt, if I could, um, so just to clarify the zones, and now this, this is not, this potential use, if we consider it, is not allowed in shoreline residential, uh, and it's not, there's one other, sorry, shoreline residential type. It is allowed in rural residential, um, and if they qualify for a hobby farm in the area that they're at. Um, so how many, I guess I'm clear, how many homes or how many zones are we actually looking at implementing this in? Like, was it, it seems to me, first of all, I just want to give background, um, I know this came from last council. I, I, I know of one person that I met campaigning that asked me about chickens, but I haven't heard anything since. I haven't heard a thing from anybody in the township, and maybe there are chicken people out there, and I don't want to be disrespectful, but, um, my concern frankly is that, you know, this is an awful lot of work, and maybe for, for what I see is really not that many homes that it's going to impact and, uh, residential areas. And are we, are we putting an awful lot of effort into something that's going to have limited, uh, uptick or, or, you know, within our communities? So maybe just give me an idea what, what zone, residential zones would, would be now able to have, uh, backyard chickens that couldn't in the first place?
Thank you Mayor Evans and through the chair. So the, uh, hobby farms are currently only permitted on the agricultural zone lands and rural zone lands. So we're proposing that they would be permitted as a temporary use in the rural residential, country residential, hamlet residential, and greenland zone. So I don't have the number of properties that that would apply to, um, but it would open it up to, to those more residential properties. Um, anecdotally, the planning department has received, um, inquiries over the years, um, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, um, of people, you know, wanting to have this use on the property. Uh, it is true that any of these inquiries could have done a site-specific zoning amendment to enact that use on their property and given a site-specific analysis. It's difficult because there would be no parameters at all to, um, analyze that by. So if we have this, these sort of regulations, uh, in effect, and from what we've sort of put together, they are quite restrictive. Um, um, so, you know, you'd have to have kind of the perfect property, um, and, you know, setbacks matched in order to, as of right, be able to do this. So it could be that a lot of these are having to go through committee of adjustment or through council anyway. Um, and it would be the, you know, the uptick, it's unclear. You would have to see who is going to be proposing it, and then again, whether or not their specific property would meet these regulations or whether they would require planning approval, so, um...
Okay, no, that's fine, that, that's great. I realize that, you know, that you're not going to, I don't expect to have the full numbers of, uh, of what houses are impacted or not, but, um, yeah, I guess my concern, I'm not against it, I just, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's an awful lot of work and, and for how many, and, and is it really something that people want? So it's my concern. Thank you Chair.
Great, thanks Counselor Halaoka.
Yes, through you, Mister Chair. Yeah, I'm, my question is along the same lines of, uh, his worship's. Is there a way we could find out how many people, uh, are interested in having chickens first before we proceed with all this work?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. So I could try to dig up the minutes from the zoning bylaw review, so just through the anecdotal presentations, there was information on there that said, you know, uh, there was a, a number of comments, enough that it was, it warranted its own special, um, you know, uh, slide deck, uh, for that, that review. And again, um, we have received, um, inquiries, uh, you know, from property owners, uh, whether or not they would meet these standards, um, are unclear because we've sort of, the inquiry has sort of stopped there, that, you know, we, they're not permitted unless you're in these two zones. Um, so I could try to get a little bit more anecdotal information around that. Um, I know that some of the inquiries have been property owners in the shoreline, in the shoreline residential zone, I know a few of them are there, so we're proposing that that wouldn't be appropriate, but those people would still be able to come forward and have a site-specific amendment, given the regulations that would be, that would be available for a review. Um, but again, anyone who did want this use does have the ability to, um, apply for a site-specific review and have that use on the property, notwithstanding this, this, this whole process or program.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I too, uh, only, uh, during my campaigning, only was, uh, asked about this by one person in Perkinsfield. And, uh, that's it, so.
Great.
Food for thought, thank you.
I seem to recall, having watched all those deliberations and stuff like that, it was, um, at the height of the pandemic, when eggs were extremely expensive and people were thinking, there's a cheap way to provide eggs for a family, not realizing the cost to actually house chickens, building the coops, buying chicken feed, cleaning up, it's, um, what is it? The, the juice isn't worth, worth the squeeze? I think somebody uses that quite frequently around North Simcoe. Um, yeah, that's, uh, that seems to be a little bit of it, I remember it coming up in the meetings. I'm going to go to Counselor Brunel first and then Counselor Walma.
Great, thank you, uh, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm kind of the opposite, actually, uh, when, uh, during the campaign, it was, really nobody talked to me about this, but since then, uh, the few people have, uh, expressed, uh, actually on both sides of the argument, so I, I'd be in full favor of option number one, to host a public meeting about this, because I think there's, uh, quite a few interests in the, in, in residents who are in rural or residential that would like to do, uh, um, a backyard chicken, um, call it, uh, operation or farm, hobby farm. Um, and, um, so I would be full favor of, of the option number one.
Great. Thanks Counselor Brunel, Counselor Walma.
Thank you Mister Chair, through you. Um, I was there for the public meetings, uh, when we discussed, uh, backyard chickens. Uh, there were multiple, uh, multiple people that brought it forward. Uh, it was, uh, I will say, I think the majority of council at the time were supportive of the, the pilot and it's, uh, staff that gave the, uh, the pushback against expanding the program. Uh, if you were to go out to, uh, Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, uh, they have concerns over backyard chickens. Um, that being said, this, uh, I mean, everything gets paused, everything gets slowed down, municipal government is already very, very slow. I, I feel like this was given its, its due diligence, we had people come in and say that they wanted it, there wasn't people when we had, uh, those, uh, uh, buy, or the zoning bylaw reviews that came in and said they didn't want chickens, there was just those that said that they did. So to me, this is a pilot program, I'm supportive of it. I think this is, we, it's, when we say pilot, it's not ingrained forever, it's something that we try. If it doesn't work, we get feedback from the neighbors that the chickens are too loud or they're running around the neighborhood, um, then, uh, then we stop. Um, but in the meantime, I mean, this, the, the, the comments that I remember, and I'm, I'm not prepped for this one, I apologize, were along the lines of education, uh, homesteading, all that kind of stuff, exactly like, uh, Counselor, I think it was Counselor Halaoka mentioned, or sorry, Deputy Mayor, on COVID. That was something that we were all looking into a lot more heavily. Just because COVID's not happening now doesn't mean it's not a good idea still, so I'm supportive of the pilot program and, uh, I would support, I think that's option one? One, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I don't want a meeting, do it.
That's option one then. So you want option two? Option two. All right, any, uh, any, sorry.
That's a meeting as well.
They all have meetings.
No. Option three, alternative, alternative direction.
Sorry, Director Hunt, can you please clarify, do both of them require statutory meetings?
Yes, certainly, uh, and through you, yes. So the, the three options are that we hold a statutory public meeting based on the draft bylaw, uh, in appendix one, or option two is that you direct that it be amended in some way if some of the regulations don't make sense or you want additional, um, and then hold a statutory public meeting, or option three, alternative direction.
Option one's fine.
Option one, all right, thank you. Any further discussion, Council?
I'll go with one for now.
All right, how about I put the recommendation forward in light of, there we go. All right, so I've got a recommendation that Planning and Development Report P D dash zero zero two dash two five regarding the temporary use of backyard chickens on certain residential properties in the township be received and that staff be directed to schedule and hold a statutory public meeting in accordance with the Planning Act to consult on proposed municipally-initiated amendments to zoning bylaw two-two dash zero seven five to permit the temporary use of backyard chickens on certain residential properties in the township in accordance with the draft bylaw as generally outlined in appendix one of Report P D dash zero zero two dash two five. Can I get a mover and seconder please? Counselor Brunel, thank you. Seconded by Counsel Walma, thank you. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously, thank you, Council. All right, we are on D 2.5 Recreation Report REC-001-25, Seniors Community Grant Application Program for 2025-2026. Director Palace?
Yes, absolutely. I just want to make an apology first. I think I had some copy and paste issues when I uploaded that grant. I think there's a paragraph in there that's repeated. But anyways, that being said, so based on some trends in recreation services, our recreation service coordinator has developed a very creative program that we've applied for the seniors community grant funding for $22,000 to introduce sort of an adventure-based recreation programming for older adults in the township. This is an annual provincial funding program that's used to kind of create wellbeing initiatives and sustainable recreation through municipalities. So the program that we are proposing for the grant would take about $6,500 in existing staff time. Primarily, that would be the recreation services coordinators. Third-party recreation service providers would be involved, and then some volunteers to deliver the program. So it will kind of involve a lot of members throughout the community, which is, which is great. The funding's being utilized to offer these programs free to participants for 2025 and 2026, and future funding based on participation numbers will be accounted for to create sustainability within the program moving into the future. For 2025, upon a successful funding application, the program capacity for the series of activities will be for about 30 individuals per session. Some of the elements of the program include outdoor adventure excursions. We're looking at bringing in Free Spirit Tours for that. I don't know if you're familiar with that company. They host a variety of outdoor recreational pursuits, canoeing, kayaking, stand-up paddle boarding, hiking, forest therapy, that kind of thing. They do sensory walks in forests, which is kind of a new thing. I think they even lead some of the natural bathing, which is sort of like a meditation-type thing. It's quite trendy at the moment. Further, in the funding program, we would like to do, we'd like to make a purchase of some specialized walking equipment. So we'd purchase some Nordic poles and snowshoes, which would be beneficial to create programs moving forward. And then obviously, we could use these, that equipment in our recreation equipment program lending as well. So those would become free to the community to utilize when they need it.
That's great. Thanks, Director Palace.
Yep.
Counsel, questions regarding this? Counsel Holoka?
Yeah, as the council member on the seniors advisory committee, I think a lot of the pre-work has been done through our aging plan and our age-friendly status that we've received. And I think a lot of the credit has to go to our Chair, Lynn Moon. And I know our new recreational services director, Thomas Byalice, is gung ho to get involved in this, and his enthusiasm and professionalism has already shown. And it's, it would be extremely beneficial if we got this grant on a continuous basis. So thank you to those two individuals.
That's great. Thanks, Counsel Holoka. Anyone else? All right, I got a rec, sorry? No? Okay. A recommendation in front of me, that Recreation Report REC-001-25 regarding the Seniors Community Grant Application Program 2025-2026 be received, and that council direct staff to submit an application for the new Nature Connect program to the Seniors Community Grant Program 2025-2026 in the amount of $22,105. And further, that upon a successful grant application, staff proceed with the implementation of the appropriate accounts and GL codes into the 2025 and 2026 operating budgets to successfully administer and track the program financially. And further, that council approves staff to invest $6,480 of staff time and in-kind services to the operations associated with the Nature Connect program. Can I get a mover? Counselors Holka, thank you. Seconded by Mayor Evans. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thanks, Counsel. All right. And that moves us in. We've got nothing in committees, nothing in consent items. Brings us to E 2, Matters for Consideration. E 2 dot 1, Accessibility Advisory Committee Motion, Accessible Seating Area for Blue Water Beach. Counsel, any questions regarding this? Nope. All right. So I've got a recommendation in front of me that the Accessibility Advisory Committee, AAC, motion dated January 9, 2025 regarding an accessible bench at Blue Water Beach be received, and that council herein supports the AAC motion and directs staff to proceed accordingly with any associated funds to be taken from the accessibility reserve. Can I get a mover and seconder, please? Mayor Evans, thank you. Counsel Walma, thank you. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, E 2 dot 2, Accessibility Advisory Committee Motion, Kwajia Beach Boardwalk. Counsel, any questions regarding this? Mayor Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. I think this is a great idea. There's already a boardwalk on the north, sort of the S bend between 11 and 12. My question, as it pertains to this location, it's a pretty heavy location right on Concession 11, or the end of Concession 11 going into the water. And we do have some porta-potties there already. We have the garbage bins that are out there on a seasonal basis. Although, my question is sort of through the chair to Director Leach. There's heavy rains, because the rain comes right off the road there. And, and as it washes out after rain, as it goes down to the water, it really digs out, it can, like, and digs out that area. I know in the past, I don't know if you've done in the past, but that perforated pipe that you can put in the ground or something. First of all, the walkway because of that is even more important. There is significant, there's park, public parking there, so people, unlike the other one at the S bend, even there's more people from the other side that, and accessibility, make it a little more accessible. Is there a way to look at that erosion control in that area? And if you're, maybe not right away. I think that I wouldn't hold this project up for that. But moving forward, that some way that we can clean that, for people that don't even need to use the walkway, but make it a leisure for people to walk down there. So.
Director Leach?
Yep, definitely through the chair. We'll take a look at this. We'll work with the Kwajia Beach Association. We are one-third, two-thirds, they own two-thirds of it, one-third. So we'll make sure that what we come up with there is acceptable and works with the group. At the same time, we'll take a look at the drainage. There's several of these beach access areas that we're looking at in our capital project. We've identified two areas already that have similar type of view. So we'll take a look at that. We do have a budget for boardwalks, and we'll be looking at a variety of different areas within the township. But this one, I understand, is coming from the, from the accessibility reserve. So we'll work with the association, and we'll come up with a solution there. When you put in rolling boardwalks, or these aren't rolling boardwalks anymore, we've, we've moved away from that type of boardwalk where you use the fire hose underneath. It's just not, unfortunately, after about four or five years, we're having to replace them with the new system that we have. That's, that's the one that you alluded to at the north end of Kwajia Beach. It's working a lot better, easier to install, and we feel the cost is pretty much the same as doing the rolling boardwalk setup. So we'll take a look at that and see what's feasible for that, and see if we can improve the drainage in there. There used to be a drainage pipe in that area, and it's been removed subsequently. But we'll, we'll take another look at it along with this, and I'll work with the association accordingly. The same as with the previous motion for the Blue Water Beach. We'll take a look at that and see what's involved from a capital standpoint, to provide a different type of viewing area down near the beach area.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director Leach. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel Walma?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Leach. And I guess just a thought for counsel on this. I love the boardwalks. I think that they do a great job providing accessibility features at certain beaches. However, I want to ensure that it's actually an accessible walk, and we're not just putting it in for the sake of putting in a boardwalk. If we can't meet those slope guidelines so that it is an accessible pathway, then I don't think that it's something that's worthwhile making the expenditure on either.
That's a valid comment. You know, with the, to make it truly accessible, you've got to have the 12 to 1 slope. You have to have leveling out zones after every 30 feet. There's a bunch of requirements that come in to make it a truly accessible feature. We, when we install these, we don't typically have them as fully certified as accessible. But what they are, are there, we consider them as a bit of a mobility aid to assist people in getting down to the beach easier than having to go through the sand and stuff later. So we'll take a look at these in order to be part of the accessibility reserve, to see if we can still maintain the 12 to 1 from a slope standpoint, have the bailout zone every 30 feet, and then you have to have five feet. There's a bunch of requirements that are involved with making sure it's fully accessible. So we can report back on that after we do all those findings through the committee.
Thanks, Director Leach.
Counsel Holoka? Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Director Leach, what's the feasibility of maybe putting in concrete steps with railings? Is that, is that too much of a reach? Is it not beneficial long-term? I'm just, inquiring minds want to know.
Yeah.
Director Leach?
Through the chair. Obviously, expenses is one of the big, the big items. When you have things like that, erosion control tends to be something that you have to be careful of. And then when you get the slope, that, that, it's not a great slope there. It has its pros and cons of steps, like there could be, there have to be large steps in order because it's not a great slope. Personally, I wouldn't start looking at stuff like that for low-slope areas like that. I think we can come up with better solutions on the surface and have less maintenance and long-term concerns with that. On steeper access areas, which we do, we prefer building out of wood. We can do that ourselves. We've done that through the rail trail and a variety of different access points and put in new wooden steps because, A, we can build them in-house, and B, if they have to be repaired or removed or anything else, then it tends to be easier.
Similar to kitchen lane?
Yes, similar to that type of thing. We've, if you go down the rail trail, we've put in a couple of nice stairs down there and things like that.
Okay, thank you very much. Great. Thanks, Director Leach. Any further questions? All right, I've got a recommendation in front of me that the Accessibility Advisory Committee, AAC, motion dated January 9, 2025 regarding access to Kwajia Beach be received, and that council herein supports the AAC motion and directs staff to investigate the feasibility of installing a new boardwalk at the main entrance of Kwajia Beach. And further that, should staff deem the project feasible and financially non-restrictive, the associated funds shall be taken from the accessibility reserve. Can I get a mover, please? Counsel Brunel, thank you. Seconded by Counsel Holoka. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Section 8, Discussion of Motions, of which notice has previously been given. We don't have any. That takes us to Section G, Communications. Got a motion in front of me that the consent items under G1 Communications be received as information. Is there anything anybody wishes to pull for comment? Mayor Evans?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to pull item G 1.2 and item G 1.6, just for comment.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Brunel?
Item G 1.4.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Mayor Evans, G 1 dot 2, please.
Great, thank you, Chair. I'm just, sorry, just going to pull this up to make sure I'm speaking to the right. Okay, yeah, this is a letter that we received from Diane Levlovic with regards to the previous meeting of January 8, 2025, the regular meeting of council. There's a couple of comments in here with regards to Ms. Levlovic's deputation and the reason that at that time, I didn't allow it to move forward. And I'm pulling this forward not just for Mrs. Levlovic. I think she understands now where I was, my concerns, but for everybody in the township. We value the, the opportunity for deputations, be they open or scheduled. We think it's a valuable, valuable tool for the public and for, frankly, for us. These are opportunities for us to, to understand what the needs of the council are and to evaluate them and to work on them if we feel that it's something we need to do. So there were four, and first of all, let me just clarify here. This has nothing to do with Ms. Levlovic as a person. This is about her deputation. And anybody that makes a deputation, it's about your deputation. If I have a problem with your deputation, it's about your deputation, how your deputation was set up. There were four things that were wrong with the deputation. I won't go into them now. They've all been clarified, but they were, they were egregious. You know, a number of different things. I don't want to, you know, that's been done. And I still stand by that, and I wouldn't make any other decision to this. We expect all the parties that come in here to work within the boundaries and the rules that we have set up. We have established rules of procedure. So when somebody comes in and presents a deputation that is totally contrary on four different counts to what we have as rules set up, and ironically, the deputation was about the rules that we have set up, and I'm going to change them, but I'm not going to follow the rules that I have already in place. Well, that doesn't work that way. You follow the rules, good or bad. That's why they're there. You have to follow them. So attempting to circumvent these rules just undermines the integrity of these whole proceedings. I have been indulgent. And she mentioned it again today. I was indulgent, yes, because I, I want, I want people to feel comfortable. I want them to come in and be able to come in and make their views known, be them good or bad. I don't care where you're coming from on an issue. We want to hear the good or bad. It's nothing, and it's nothing personal. It's not like we sit here and we go, oh, well, that's not what I agree with. No, we act for everybody. And this council acts as one voice for everybody in the township. And that's a really salient point that I think some people have to really realize. You can feel one way on something, but it doesn't mean you vote that way, or it can be totally different. We're acting on the voice of everybody that we see in this township, the whole township. So, and they're put in place, so we, we're equitable process for everybody. So again, this is, it was nothing to do with Ms. Levlovic personally, and I, I talked to Ms. Levlovic in other cases in the past. But in this case, it was too egregious to not be recognized, and frankly, to reorient the process. So everybody plays by the same rules. So moving forward. So that's, that's it. I'm open to talk to Ms. Levlovic again. But I think, again, she was here and made her deputation again tonight, and it satisfied the requirements. And I saw no need to, you know, and I'm happy, and I'm thankful that she did do that, because she's, you know, realized, she has previous government experience, so she knows the rules, and then that they're important to follow. And we move forward. So enough of that. Thank you. And the second one I just want to talk to you briefly about is totally different, G 1.6, Ontario Launches New Energy Efficiency Programs. I know there's a number of people in the community, as we've had twice as much snow this year, but we've also, I don't know what the temperature level has been. I've had a number of people comment on electricity and gas. And, you know, everything goes up, we know that. But there's a number of people, and I personally had a, I had a space heater in my trailer, and my bill went up 150 bucks last month. So there's a number of programs in here. I know there's somebody, a friend of ours, that's $600 he paid in electric programs. It is, it is impacting people, and there's a number of government, Ontario government programs with the new energy efficiency programs, providing opportunities for you to insulate your home, improve your, you know, ventilation, heaters, things like that. So I suggest that people take a look at this program and take advantage of it. I'm kicking myself because I did that all two, three years ago. So it would have been very basic stuff, like you buy insulation, you can go and get credit for it. So please, please take advantage of that, and just wanted to bring that forward. So, thank you, Chair. That's my two comments.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Evans. One of the things I've been hearing from the community as well about electricity costs, with a lot of people moving into what were previously seasonal resident properties and making them full-time homes, sometimes Hydro has them still listed as seasonal. I believe there's a different seasonal rate, if what I've heard is true. So maybe checking with Hydro one to make
is true. So maybe checking with Hydro one to make sure that your classification has changed may help offset your bill a little bit. Council Brunel, you wanted to talk about 1 dot 4.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much, Chair. I actually viewed the county council meeting on January 14th on this issue. And I highly recommend anybody who's interested in this topic to, to, to look at that pre-recorded session. It was very, very interesting. I quite enjoyed it. I'd like to ask our county representatives if they can explain the, where we're at with this and the triple majority approval that needs, that is required now for this to go through.
Arabs?
So just to clarify the, the triple majority and how that works, and where we are in the process.
Yeah.
So the, so the process, I can answer the first question, was in the regular meeting in our, in our, you can go and, it's in our agenda. So the, and the council highlights, or I believe is in the committee, the whole meeting, right? Just make sure I know. We have a, we do, we do have an article, or the article from, you know, it's in the county council highlights. Deputy Mayor, you have it up there. Maybe you can just.
Link's not working here.
It's not working? Okay. I just don't want to misquote if it's already there.
Go to a different source. Continue on the thing.
Okay. As far as the triple majority goes, the, any changes to county composition will require approval at, obviously at the, at the upper tier level and at the lower tier level. And they will require a triple majority. So 60, well, depends on the size of the council, how many people. So in our case, it would be four of us, four people would have the minimum to, to make that determination. So there will be as well a public meeting involved with that. And that's, that will be occurring, I shouldn't, I shouldn't quote actually, because I don't know the exact date, but it will be in the next two to three months. So, so that's where we're at. So the, then, then, every 16 municipalities that make up Simcoe County, the associated cities, Barry and Arilia do not vote on this, but the, the 16 will all have to approve at a lower tier level with a triple majority to have it move forward. So it'll be a lengthy process, just so people, if you're watching from home, we're, we're, February 25th right now. It'll take the good part of the next year, year and a half for this process to take place. So.
Great. Thank you very much.
So that's, is that good?
All your questions answered. I did get to the news release here. You've got it too? All right. Perfect. Any further questions? We're good. All right. I've got a motion in front of me that the consent items under section G one communications be received as information. Can I get a mover and seconder, please? Council Brunel, thank you. Seconded by Mayor Evans. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Any new business? Nope, not seeing any? All right. We're not going into confidential closed session. So that brings us to adjournment. I've got a resolution that the meeting adjourns at 9:03 PM, moved by Council Holka, seconded by Council Walma. All those in favor? Perfect. Carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone in the audience. Thank you for those online that are watching. Hope you have a great evening and hope to see you at Carnaval de Bar on this Saturday at Perkinsfield Park, 11 AM to 2 PM.